If council members and commissioners would take their seats, please. So, we are now reconvening after a closed session about labor negotiations. There was no reportable action from that portion of the meeting. We will now start our item number two, which is a joint study session of the City Council and the Utilities Advisory Commission. So, commissioners, thank you very much for joining us this evening, and you have information that you would like to share with us and questions for us as well. So, I look to the Chair, John Foster, to start this discussion, and thank you.
Mayor Holman, thank you very much for that introduction and for inviting us all to join you this evening, as we do periodically every year to 18 months or so. It's a great opportunity to hear from individual members of the City Council on the utility issues of priority to you. Let me start with a few words myself. The city of Palo Alto is unique in California in operating all utilities municipally, our electric, our gas, our water, and our wastewater. We're unique in that respect. We are, as I think many people know, a very green-friendly city, and we are also a very innovative city. And those things come together wonderfully in our municipal utility in providing an opportunity to be innovative in sustainability in running a municipal utility. At the same time, I tend to think of our utility in a pyramid structure, and the very base of it is the need to operate our utility safely, reliably, and cost-effectively. And as Director Fong is fond of reminding us, if we fail to do those things, all the nice things with sustainability and everything else doesn't happen. So, it is obviously very important that we continue that. We then move to the next layer of the pyramid, which is the opportunity in Palo Alto to push the ball forward on sustainability, renewable energy, and energy efficiency, which we have found over time is cost-effective for our residents, our ratepayers, and our businesses. And so, that's great. And then, the last piece of the pyramid is Palo Alto is uniquely positioned to be a leader among communities around the United States in setting an example for other communities and utilities on what can be done to use less fossil fuel in a cost-effective way for ratepayers. So, we have a wonderful opportunity here. What has worked very well in these discussions in the past is for individual members of the UAC and City Council to share the thoughts on their mind, what topics are of interest to them, what would you all like to see us work on over the next year? And without, we can go around, or however you want to do it. Mayor Holman.
I think first, we would go to other commission members and see if they have questions that they would like council members to answer, or points that they would like to make that maybe accentuate the need for the question, or something they're particularly satisfied with that the commission has undertaken. We have two commissioners who are going to be leaving the commission, so maybe it would be particularly appropriate to have them make comments. Asher, would you care to go? Not to put you on the spot here, but I'm putting you on the spot.
Thank you, Mayor Holman. Well, I really don't have anything to add to that introduction, and I really just want to, you know, thank the members of this council for the opportunity to spend the last couple of years, you know, devoting my, what was it, first Wednesday nights of every month to the UAC for a couple of years.
Okay, thank you. Other commissioners? Are you all going to be shy on us tonight? So, go right ahead.
I guess I have a couple of things I would like to recommend to council as I am leaving the commission, and this is perhaps my last chance to say something to you that I think are important. The first is following up on the comments about the importance of reliability in the utilities. And I really believe that is really the thing that our customers look to us for first is reliability. They, you know, the water has to flow, the electricity has to flow, the wastewater has to flow, and so, you know, cost effectiveness is good, but reliability is the top thing. And in that context, the, our, five years after we learned the lesson of having a single-point connection, we still have not gotten our second-point connection in our electrical supply. I think that, I think doing whatever it takes to get SLAC and DOE and Western all lined up so that we can make a connection out on the west side is perhaps the most important thing that we've, that needs to be done. So, that would, I would ask that the new UAC and this council push on that as hard as they can. The second thing I would like to say is, 11 years ago, when I first joined the UAC, my first vote on the UAC was on to make a recommendation to council on whether or not we should provide, pursue fiber to the premises, at that time called fiber to the home. It's only been 11 years, folks. And I know that there, you know, there are things on the table. By the way, that first item, the first vote I took where I voted yes and said, "Let's do it," that proposal fell apart over a legal issue that came to the surface. There've been several other, since then, there've been several other pushes at that, all of which haven't gone anywhere. And we're now in the middle of another push, and we've got city staff developing a proposal. We've got Google considering us as a possibility. We've got other carriers that all of a sudden recognize that Google is going to be a competitor, and they're starting to compete, Comcast and Verizon and such. I would urge council to make this the last run. Either do it now, if that's what the analysis turns out that that's the right thing to do, and that, you know, that hasn't been determined yet, or accept the fact that we've missed the boat and it's too late to do a municipal fiber project, and that the commercial world of Google and Comcast and Verizon and all of those guys are going to do it, and they are going to take care of it, and there will be, you know, there will be fiber to the premises, but it won't be a municipal project. It will be in the commercial world. And I think we, if that's the decision now, then let's take that off the table and not spend any more time working on another round.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your service. So, I thought I saw another light down there, or not? Yes?
Yeah. Go right ahead. Thank you so much for having us and meeting with us tonight. I love the work that we do on the UAC, and it's great to be able to get some guidance from you all and things that we ought to focus on. And so, I've particularly enjoyed serving with Commissioner Melton and Commissioner Waldfogel, who, both of whom I've learned to listen very closely to. So, I echo what they say, and I think in addition to the second connection to the grid and kind of determining what we do on fiber to the premises and what the UAC should be doing there, I'd also like your thoughts on fuel switching. So, we've kind of, the, since the last five years or so I've been on the UAC, I've done, I thought, I think the city has done an incredible job of moving to a more sustainable and green electrical utility, leading the country in that way and leading the world in many ways. And so, I think a lot of us are looking to, what do we do next? And so, we've turned our Palo Alto Green into Palo Alto Green Gas, and I'm kind of wondering if there's a next step there, and I wanted to see if you have any advice on that. And then, finally, I think something that we've done in the past that is, that goes with utilities and has been great for the aesthetic of the city is undergrounding, and we're kind of in a, as far as I know, we're in some sort of netherworld. I'm not sure what we're doing about undergrounding. I think it's important. Obviously, we've reaped the benefits of undergrounding in certain neighborhoods. People like it. I'd like to see us do, finish the job and do it the rest of the city, and so, I'd like to see what your thoughts are on that. So, thank you again for meeting with us. Appreciate it.
So, I don't see any more lights from commissioners, so council, yes, there you go.
Oh, tight, a little tight.
Yeah.
I'm going to have to lean out.
I'm going to pack up, or else I'll fall off.
Good evening, City Council members and fellow commissioners. Thanks very much for having us this meeting. I'm Garth Hall, been a commissioner now for, I guess I'm coming on to my third year. I really appreciate the, this meeting. So, one of the fun things for me, just over the last year or so, is to realize what progress the city has made in, on the electric side in terms of its green footprint. I think we're probably amongst the leaders in the United States, never mind California. And it's been really a joy to see Chief Sustainability Officer Gilfriend, appointed by the staff or by the City Council, to take on a role about what else can we do? And so, I think one of the key things to, for us to look for is, where do we go from here? We could become a lot more efficient with our natural gas usage. There's no doubt about it. Fuel switching, Commissioner Koch mentioned, is one avenue, but other things, too. Also, in the idea of reducing the footprint in greenhouse gas in transportation, that may not, that may seem like not a utility function, but I believe it can be and maybe should be. When you think about the opportunity moved towards electric cars, it, you know, you see them more and more on the road these days. It's not that we have to subsidize anything to do with purchases of cars, that is done by the market, but there may be a consideration around pricing for electricity to encourage further penetration of electric usage and thereby reduce the greenhouse footprint of the city. So, that and many other areas, and the areas of water recycling and so on, I just think there's just a lot more to be done. The other thing, just an aspect of the fiber to the premises, I think it's been obvious to many that it's not only an efficiency thing and providing what consumers want in the city, but it also is a greenhouse footprint-reducing strategy. The more folks who are able to communicate effectively from their homes or businesses without travel, the better off we all are in terms of just burning up fuel in order to get around. I just think that it's yet another strategy for us to adopt. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
Okay, so, looks like we'll be coming to council members now for questions and consideration of the points, especially that are, have been mentioned this evening and the ones that are lined out in the staff report that was worked on with the Chair and Vice Chair and the commission in terms of what topics they would like to have addressed. So, council members, is that Councilmember Niss?
So, if I could pick up on what John Melton just said, we talk about it going back 11 years. It goes back 20 years, John. That's when we first had a website. And I think your point is so well-taken, and if we're going to do it, do it. And if not, let's absolutely, you know, let whatever, you know, company may come in, and some company will come in, there'll be absolutely no question. And as you've said, Google is, Google is going in in a whole variety of different directions. They certainly have made impacts in a variety of places. One of the cities that we've talked about but haven't really discussed recently is Chattanooga, which has made theirs very effective in a variety of different ways, in addition to having some emergency response pieces to it as well. But I think that is absolutely something we need to take up with a, you know, with a real sense of purpose. And I'm glad you mentioned it in particular tonight, because that, we need to be reminded all the time that that's out there and in play. So, thanks, and thanks for everything you've all done who are going off as well.
Vice Mayor Schmidt.
I'd like to just follow up on a comment that Chair Foster made about governance, that utilities is a funny part of the city for us. It makes up half the budget, but our daily life with the cities, with the utilities is very limited, and the issues that come up in utility are usual, usually major capital investments over time that necessitate a real broad perspective on the issues. The five years we've come to, the five-year forecast in the future, and it's very hard when utility issues come to the council in spotty ways to be able to draw on the expertise that the UAC does. I guess I have urged many times that you produce verbatim minutes. I have noted that to watch a UAC meeting takes three hours, and if you have the verbatim minutes, maybe in 20 minutes you can get to, you know, a lot of good wisdom and foresight that we don't have. So, maybe an option is to think through, you know, how you can reach us and the wider community in a more effective way. And I might suggest to you, in lieu of verbatim minutes, of every time you send a recommendation to council, insert in it the place on the media tape where the discussion of the UAC takes place, not the presentations or the public comments, but where you, as the commission, are discussing back and forth or with staff issues. And that way, we can get the essence of your argument. Because I find that, you know, to have a group like yours that has such experience of sharing with the community, it's important that you reach out to us and help us with that insight that you have.
Councilmember Burt.
Well, first, thanks to all of you for the work that you do and the contributions you make and the thorough analysis that we consistently receive from you. I want to touch on topics that several of you raised. First, on the, what Commissioner Melton had raised about the criticality of the second or western connection from PG&E to provide adequate reliability in the event of a really severe event. I would like to see, this was, I'm trying to remember, it's now been two or three years, maybe, since we saw our last report on that. I'd like to see not only an update of where we are, but a set of alternatives on how to resolve it. And if we're looking at the cost and it's significant, then we, as a city, may have to look at what would be the rate impact for that additional reliability, and we lay it on the table and decide whether we're willing to do it. We're 20 now, I think, 20-plus percent below PG&E on electricity costs, and so, if we have to bite the bullet and take some portion of that to have the reliability, we'd get heat on it in the near term and, but we'd get big heat if we lose power again. Second, on the fuel switching, we're going to have, I hope you're going to stick around, because tonight's agenda is going to be talking about our climate action plan, in which this is a major component, as we really look long-term. How does any city or government or get to 80% reduction, what's more, 100% without this? And so, this is how to get there, nobody's had to face until now, because nobody really had a plan. We had a bunch of aspirations around 80% reduction, but nobody really has had a plan. We now can begin to really formulate that. More specifically, I'm interested in us looking now at whether we should acquire additional renewable power purchase agreements beyond what we've booked for the power, electric power demand we currently have, but to begin to look at opportunistic, really good deals like we've had, and this is why we've done so well, is we've been very opportunistic on our bodies, that would meet whatever increase in demand of electricity we'll have going forward for fuel switching, and it'll build over time, and will certainly offset some of that through ever better efficiency. And second, as we have our oldest renewable contracts expiring. And so, I think with the very low rates we have now, it would be really prudent to seriously examine booking some additional contracts. They take generally several years before they come online. And finally, on the fiber to the premise, I've been concerned that we, as a city, have been over enamored with chasing the Google unicorn. That's been dangled out in front of us for, what, three years, and it may eventually happen, but I certainly don't want to have us hold back because we keep thinking this magical thing's going to fall in our laps from Google. I don't know if it's a unicorn, or it's Lucy pulling the football out from in front of Charlie Brown. But in any event, I want to see us look at moving forward now, and if Google's got something that they will commit to in the near term, great. Otherwise, I'm not for holding and waiting for them. And maybe if we actually lay it on the line, we'll see that they'll get off the dime. But if not, we've got, what, $20 million to leverage?
Yeah.
And almost no other city has that to work for their premise program. So, if anybody can do it, we should, with our demographics and those dollars.
Councilmember DuBois.
So, thanks again for serving, particularly John and Asher, I think, are finishing up. Appreciate your service. Just as a new council member, I would appreciate, I mean, next time you guys come, maybe some kind of presentation, it's kind of a summary of accomplishments and some of your issues and questions, I think that'd be useful. A lot of groups do that when we have these joint meetings. You know, personally, I'm very interested in water reuse and how Palo Alto can move forward in that area, and love to hear your thoughts on that. And I'm also very interested in fiber to the premise. I won't repeat what Commissioner Burt said, but that was a good summary. I was, I did tell one of your recent meetings, and there seemed to be some question about whether the UAC should be discussing fiber, so hopefully we can clarify that. I would really like to see you guys review our progress in fiber, both on the Google initiative and the city and service, and I would love to see you guys do that regularly and really send your recommendations to us, because it's a complicated issue. And then, on fuel switching and kind of sustainability, I think that same night, you guys had a preview of what we're going to get tonight, and you guys had some interesting comments. Particularly appreciated some of the comments on how do you manage the transition, and what are the economics of that, particularly if we're trying to switch from gas to electricity? You know, we have these big hairy goals, these reductions we want to get to, but if you guys could really give us feedback on how you do that in a way that makes economic sense, I think that'd be very useful. So, thank you.
Councilmember Sharpe.
Thank you, and I also would like to thank Commissioner Melton and Commissioner Waldfogel for their service. I've really enjoyed working with you on the UAC and been really impressed by both the contributions you guys have made. And then, I think I just want to say in general that this is really a fantastic commission. I'm always really impressed with the thoughtfulness and analysis that you guys do. And, you know, keep up the good work. You really do a great job. And when it comes to undergrounding, since you mentioned that, I thought I'd mention that as well. I also think that we should put that to the people of Palo Alto. Obviously, it's, you know, very expensive. I've heard, you know, really large numbers to underground the whole city. I do think, and I thought for a long time, that what we should do is put this issue to rest and go to the voters and say, you know, "This is what it'll cost, and, you know, this is what it'll cost on surcharge on your utility bill. Do you want to do it or not?" And if they want to do it, then we should do it; if not, we shouldn't do it. And I think that would be the way to deal with that, and I'd like to see the UAC take this issue up and come up with a recommendation, really, of how to put this issue resolved, because we do here in the community. We've been promised undergrounding, and, you know, we never get it, that kind of stuff. And so, currently, there is no plan to underground. I mean, there's a few, there's a few places left, right, where, who pays for it, I forget. Val, who pays the 40% of the cost, or whatever it is?
It's typically split between the communications utility and the electric utility.
It's AT&amp;T paying 40%. And that's very few places left, if I recall right.
Correct.
So, then, the other thing I did want to say, because I think we hardly ever say it, is I've gotten to know a lot of other utility directors through NCPA, Municipal Utility Directors, and while Val's not perfect, she is very, very good. And I wanted to say, Val, that you do a great job. And we're actually very lucky to have Val. And I wanted to give a shout-out to you and tell you what a great job I think you do. And, you know, appreciate it. The other thing is that I support the fiber to the premises discussion that we've, I'm not going to repeat what people said, but I also like to see that move forward as expeditiously. And I actually do think the UAC should, it's the right place to start taking that up and start looking at different options and start vetting that. Because obviously, I think that we want to get this done. I do think that Google is a very intriguing option, but who knows when that's coming about? But we also want to make sure we do it right, because if we do it wrong, there are a number of disasters out there. And in the rush to say how wonderful it is, let's not forget that this can go all wrong and that we need to do it in a thoughtful and careful and deliberate manner. And the other part I would like to see us, is given our fiber ring, it's easy to pop up, maybe easy is too strong a word, but it's very possible to stop, to pop up enterprise-class Wi-Fi in places. And we've had certain hotspots that we've started rolling out in the city, and I think the more we do that, I think that's great. And I'd also like to see us move forward with more Wi-Fi spots around. Eventually, I'd like all of California Avenue and downtown to have great enterprise-class Wi-Fi. I think that would be fantastic. And what else, do I want to say anything else? No, I think that's about it. Anyway, thank you all for your service. Really appreciate it.
Councilmember Berman.
Well, I'll try not to repeat what a lot of my colleagues have said. First off, thank you guys very much.
Except, since we can't take motions, it is good for you to state what you support for the commissioners to look at, because then they can count noses and say there's support for council, from council for so.
Very good point. Very good point. So, I'll make that really easy. I support everything that my colleagues have brought up tonight. And no, it's, you know, well, first of all, thank you guys, you know. The city's utilities are really the foundation of the community and something that a lot of folks, including myself half the time, don't really understand, and we're really lucky to have you guys, you know, serving the community, and the rates that we have and the reliability that we have, you know, are a testament to the work that you guys put in. We are at kind of an all-hands-on-deck point as a community, where it was great that we got to 100% carbon-neutral electricity portfolio, but then we realized, oh, well, 30% of our greenhouse gas emissions still come from natural gas, and 60% come from transportation, and so, what's next? I mean, it's not like you can stop and pat ourselves on the back and pretend like it's a job well-done. We have to keep moving forward and keep finding ways to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. So, the fuel switching, I think, is going to be incredibly important and complicated, and it's alluded to in our item tonight on our Sustainability and Climate Action Plan about how, as we pursue that, it's going to create a lot of, you know, complications in terms of rate structures, in terms of how we, as the amount of natural gas that we provide dwindles, but the cost for infrastructure stays, you know, there are all sorts of issues that we're going to have to work through, that we're going to rely on you guys to help us figure out. So, that's, but we have to do that if we're going to get to our 80% or 100% carbon-neutral community, which I think should be our goal. Water, Councilmember DuBois brought up, you know, water becoming more efficient and increasing our our water recycling capabilities, I think, is something that we need to start pursuing. And we need to be the leader on that front now. We've been the leader on getting a carbon-neutral electricity portfolio. Now we really need to show other communities what we can do in terms of being more efficient and creating, being creative and increasing supply of water. I really don't want to repeat everything that, oh, I thought Councilmember Burt's point about taking advantage of additional solar purchase possibilities. There's a chart on Packet Page 20 of our Packet Tonight that shows how, you know, over time, certain supplies are going to expire, and we need to be, have plans in the works years in advance to replace those, as opposed to having to rely on recs again like this chart shows. So I think that's something that we should definitely keep an eye out for, for good, advantageous opportunities. Municipal fiber, important, single-point connection, or creating a second point connection is incredibly important. I'm intrigued by the UAC's role in transportation, helping us reduce our transportation greenhouse gas emissions. Look, any ideas that you guys have, you know, I want to hear. We might not be able to, they might not be feasible, or I might not agree with them, but please don't hesitate to bring them to our attention, because we're going to have to get really creative if we, if we're going to, you know, really try to chase a very ambitious goal. So I think that's good enough for now. Thank you, guys.
Councilmember Walbach.
First, thank you to the entire commission for amazing, amazing work. You know, we just interviewed four people to replace the two outgoing commissioners, and thank you both for your exceptional work and service. I am excited also that they have big shoes to fill, and we haven't picked yet, but I think we have some fantastic applicants. It really speaks also to the nature of our community, that we do have such phenomenal applicants, people with tremendous breadth of experience, skill, and intelligence, and commitment to civic service, that they're willing to dedicate their time, free of charge, to helping us supervise and guide our utilities, which is, as Chair Foster said, so unique here in Palo Alto and such an asset for us. Just going down the list of some of these things that were discussed that all say me too, too. Fiber, yes, and we should do it quickly, and I agree with Councilmember Burt's comments on that. On communications, yes, I think that timestamping, and this is, you know, a large issue for us in general, but timestamping commission meetings, reports that come to us so that we can quickly look up when, you know, when those comments were said during a, or recommendations were made during a video, so we can go and watch the actual video. If it seems relevant to us, I think that would be really useful, but that might be more for staff to work on as well. Sorry, guys. Also, yeah, also as a new council member, this being my first time meeting with you, having a presentation or just a written report in advance of the meeting from the commission before we have our next joint study session would be great. Electricity, yes, let's definitely move seriously to explore another connection point. It is vitally important. On natural gas, it hasn't been discussed a lot tonight, but I haven't made up my mind yet. Some people think we should move to being a natural gas-free city. I'm not there yet, but I am open to that consideration. And I know you have a lot on your plate, but I hope that you're looking at, you know, ways to reduce natural gas use. On water, in addition to water efficiency and water reuse, something that I would envision being maybe a big, big, long-term project that would incorporate public works, planning, and utilities, is being a world-class leader in rainwater capture. Those are my comments for now. Thanks.
Commissioner Egglash, do you have comments or thoughts?
Sure. Or did you want the rest of the council to finish speaking?
Go right ahead.
Thanks to all of you for your comments and input tonight. These annual meetings are a huge treat for us to actually hear directly from you and share our thoughts directly with you, as opposed to the way we usually do this through inferring things through lots of written communication. So thanks a lot. This is great. I wanted to comment really briefly on a governance question about how the way the UAC and the city council work with each other, and then I also wanted to comment on fuel switching, but I won't try to touch on everything else that everyone's talked about tonight. Several years ago, when I first joined the UAC, I had this idea that our proper interaction with city council was to be a sort of unbiased advisor, I don't know, like the Congressional Budget Office or some kind of bipartisan commission. And many of you and your predecessors told me pretty clearly that that was not what was most helpful to you, that you wanted us to behave as if we were responsible for running the city in the most responsible way possible and make decisions. And even though those decisions are advisory to the city council, you wanted us to, that that was what was most helpful and most efficient for you, to be able to look at us taking distinct positions on matters that then gave you something very specific that you could either agree with or disagree with, but in any case, something that was as black and white and tangible as possible. As a commission over the last several years, we've totally taken that to heart. I think all of us approach each of these issues imagining that we were responsible for the ultimate decision, the role that in fact the city council has, trying to make the right decision, trying to articulate for the minutes and the record why we're doing that. And I hope that's proved useful to those of you who have been around for several years, and sounds about right to those of you who are new to the council. But I invite any of you to comment on that in a moment. I wanted to take a moment on fuel switching, because I think it is one of the most complex issues we've faced in many years. And I believe, and I've discussed publicly, that I think we have experts around that can help us to get to the right decision on this one. I am personally as strong an advocate for sustainability as there is anywhere, but I think it needs to be done thoughtfully and in a way that doesn't just create superficial headlines of sustainability, but really does genuinely help the planet and really does protect our rate payers at the same time. The fuel switching issue is that we have a zero-carbon electric supply, therefore, perhaps it makes sense to switch from gas to electricity for heating our houses and heating our domestic hot water. That's the fuel switching question. Most of our furnaces and water heaters today are gas-fired. That has a carbon footprint associated with it. And the argument goes, if we can move to our zero-carbon electric supply for space heating and water heating, that ought to reduce our carbon footprint. That sounds pretty simple. Why is it complicated? Electricity, our electricity comes from the Western Grid of the United States, and that grid is more than 60% powered by gas. We quite correctly say that our electricity isn't, because we're purchasing enough zero-carbon electricity in a few recs and offsets to true it up to 100%. And that's true on a spreadsheet basis, but the grid that we get our electricity from is still predominantly gas-fired. That's one reason why it's complicated. It's also complicated from an electric rate point of view. This will push our homeowners into higher electric tiers, so we'll have to re-engineer the rates appropriately, much like the problem that happened when people bought EVs. The thing that changes it dramatically is new heat pump-based furnaces are remarkably more efficient than old electric furnaces. Fuel switching would have probably made no sense at all as recently as five or 10 years ago, but as anyone who shopped for a furnace recently knows, new furnaces based on heat pump technology are incredibly more efficient than old ones, and the same unit works as a heater and as an air conditioner, and they're both very efficient. So indeed, maybe this makes a lot of sense, but it's still a dynamic situation. Sustained drought means there's going to be less hydroelectric energy. That's going to put more burden on gas-fired power plants. It's still true that solar is not a good match for our 24-hour load profile, and the only reason we can survive with so much solar in Palo Alto is we get our electricity off of the grid through PG&E, a grid that's balanced with the help of gas turbines. And so that's the sort of thing that's on my mind as we consider this issue. And the approach I bring to it, and one that I encourage all of us to bring to it, is that it's not just about a headline that allows us to brag to the world that we've reduced our carbon footprint, but that we've really done it in a thoughtful and meaningful way. And I think part of helping to get there can be to reach out to some experts in the community who know more than any of us. Anyway, thanks a lot for this opportunity and the opportunity to serve and work with you.
Thank you so very much for your comments, Commissioner Egglash. Councilmember Phil Seth.
Sure. Just a couple of brief ones here. So first of all, I too would like to thank everybody on the Advisory Commission for this. I think the utilities, you know, is really fundamental to so many people in Palo Alto, and there's such a huge amount of money involved and city funds involved in this. I think the role of the Citizens Advisory Commission is really, really important. So thank you all very much for contributing your time and intellectual investment into this. Just a couple of things. So I appreciate Commissioner Walton's comments on priorities. I agree, I think reliability and keeping the power on and the water running has got to be absolutely a hot priority. And so in terms of, you know, how do we move forward on that, and how much will it cost, and explain the cost, as Commissioner Burt commented, I think that's really important. I've lived here for 25 years, and every year or two, we get a new report from the USGS that says the probability of a major earthquake in the Bay Area has increased. And so it's coming, so I think we need to be secure, and that's obviously not the only source. In terms of fiber to the premises, I think, you know, pending the analysis, of course, but my inclination is that irrespective of whether we choose to work with a Google or an AT&amp;T or somebody like that, the city ought to own the physical infrastructure. There's anything you need to dig a trench for, the city ought to own, okay? And irrespective of whether we do something with the other folks or not, because I think that's sort of natural monopoly territory, just like a power grid. And so that's, but I have a couple of questions on fuel switching, but I think I might leave them till the next session. Thanks.
Councilmember Walbach, you have a quick follow-up?
Yeah, actually, I meant to mention it, and I want to echo what Councilmember Phil Seth just said about the importance of us having control and option for control ownership over our utilities' infrastructure, including potentially fiber optics beyond what our current infrastructure is.
So I'll join my colleagues in supporting several of these things. There's been much said about fiber. There's nothing been said about fiber that I disagree with. I would absolutely welcome your recommendations and expertise in that regard. Electric, redundant electricity source, that's been something I've been passionate about and committed to for I don't know how many years, well, certainly since the Tesla incident. And so I appreciate any advice and advancement of that facility. That would be, I think, a huge improvement to our community and a safety valve for us. Electric undergrounding, agree that we should be addressing that. It's been stalled for a good number of years now. It comes up frequently by members of the community, so I think that would be something else that I would look for your counsel on. And, you know, when it comes to water, I mean, is there anything that is now in an ongoing fashion any more important than addressing water issues? So gray water, I was at an event yesterday evening, and somebody, it was having to be somebody from another community, that talked about how like they're doing a major remodel or a significant remodel, and wanted to install, you know, gray water system at their home, but, you know, it was just way too expensive. And they are still quite expensive. So anything that we can do to try to advance that, recommendations for rebates, anything that you can come up with, you know, any kind of calculus in terms of what the payback is in terms of savings, payback in terms of rebates utilized if the money's put out there. So I think it is, I think it is an aspect of our home use that just really isn't being utilized currently. Other than that, I mean, obviously reliability of utilities is a first priority, and we absolutely take it for granted. We do not take our, although she's not perfect, because none of us are, head of the Utilities Department, Val, we are very lucky to have you, and we don't take you or the utilities' staff or this commission for granted. You do excellent work and keep our utilities on. It's easy to take some of these things for granted, because, you know, you flip a switch or turn on the valve, and, you know, things run for us, but we don't take it for granted and should never do that. Fuel switching, yes. And I think that's it in terms of, in terms of what I would like to see the commission work on and recommend to the council. And would encourage you, if you do have questions about wanting direction from council, do not be shy about asking. Before we go back to the chair, Councilmember Sharpe, you had something?
I did. I had a brief follow-up on Commissioner Egglash's comments. I wanted to say that I would fully associate my opinions with Commissioner Egglash on fuel switching, that I think it's incredibly complicated. One of my concerns is, as we go down this path, is that we actually get clearer regulatory advice from our council and understanding where we are on this. I was struck by Councilmember Walbach's comment that, you know, I'm not ready to shut down our gas utility, but I might get there. And I hope I didn't misquote you. That's what I roughly heard you say. You know, there's a big transition between where we are now, and as we move away from natural gas, if we go in that direction, you know, if we're 20% above PG&E, 30%, are people going to start saying, we want gas, we want to disband the Palo Alto gas utility and go with PG&E? And I think that right now, it's very aspirational and very half-baked, what we're talking about in terms of fuel switching, unless what we're talking about is on the margins, moving people very slowly towards changing their, you know, heaters for electric ones, you know, on efficient ones. If that's what we're talking about, I think that's great. If we're talking about something more radical, I really think we haven't thought this through yet. And not to mention that we might be able to get there and think it through, but I think right now, we're just being very aspirational and rah-rah, and I think these are serious and extremely complex and difficult issues. So I'm really glad we have the UAC to vet these for us.
Commissioner, Chair, oh, Pat, did you? Councilmember Burt.
Well, since that's such an important topic, and we've gone a little deeper on that, I want to say it's, I don't view it as either aspirational nor an immediate aggressive plan. It's neither. We're beginning a deliberate process. We're at the early stages of a deliberate process. And at that front end, the transition will be slow, and that's probably a good thing, because at that front end, we really don't yet have the visibility towards solving all of those critical and complicated elements to it. But just because we don't have those solutions in sight doesn't mean that they aren't going to be emerging as we move this ball forward. We, you know, just five years ago, we, conventional wisdom was that we were going to have a very hard time getting to 33% renewables because of all the trend lines on renewable costs going up, and we've seen the technology changes. We have nations like Germany that are ahead of the curve on renewable adoption from where we are, and they're pushing the envelope right now on smart grid systems, on storage, and on distributed generation as being real fundamental legs of being able to move further in that direction. And we will doubtless identify even more barriers as we get further along. But I've become less conservative over time in thinking that we have to have identified our solutions before we start moving down a path. The changes in technology in this arena have been so radical and are on the horizon, going to address these problems. And we may be somewhat at the forefront of this, but I And we may be somewhat at the forefront of this, but I think that we will help identify and solve those problems. I'm not supportive of capricious actions that are there for bragging rights, but I am supportive of an aggressive program that will push us into being leaders on solving those remaining problems.
So thank you now. Chair Foster.
Councilmembers, thank you very much for all your feedback. It really has been very, very helpful, and I think it's going to provide excellent guidance for us in the year ahead. Let me just make a couple of comments on points that have been raised. With respect to FTTP, Fiber to the Premises, I think we hear the message loud and clear. I would just say, our role in that has diminished, has not been active over the last couple of years because of other citizens and advisory groups and others that have been involved, which is great, but I think we will take your words to heart and reinvigorate or re-engage in that area. And then one other point I just wanted to raise, we have an interesting jurisdictional issue because our jurisdiction, as the city attorney will remind us, is the utilities only. And so when we talk about things like transportation, for example, although that goes to sustainability, that actually is not utilities. And so in areas like the city's Climate Action Plan as well, we don't technically have jurisdiction there. Now, we have a very good relationship with the city's Chief Sustainability Officer, who kindly comes and pays us a visit to fill us in on what he is doing, and the city's Chief Information Officer has come and talked about fiber. But it is something to think about, about whether the current jurisdictional bounds of the UAC are the right ones, or whether adjustments should be thought of. So something to, I don't think we're in a position to make a recommendation, but it is something I think both the UAC and the city council can think about in the months ahead. That's it. Thanks again.
We have one member of the public who's come to speak to this item, Win Gersich, and you'll have three minutes.
Hi. I was listening to a lot of the things that you were talking about, and the one thing under utilities, I hope that water and sewer lines are part of that. Because I go to many city councils, and I hear about, you know, Milbury had five water mains break in one day, and you're talking about an earthquake happening. When you put chlorine and fluoride in the drinking water, this stuff is so corrosive, the pipes are leaching lead, they're disintegrating, and they're putting these poisons in the water in already corroded pipes. So what you really need to do is to have some kind of ordinance that you're going to replace so many miles of pipes every year. I know Burlingame had, they were sued for dumping lead and arsenic in the bay, and they had to replace 100 miles of sewer lines, and they jacked up the water prices so high on everybody to replace the pipes, and it's going to take 20 years to do it. So I guess that's 20 miles a year, right? And I know Marin, I spoke to one of the water people in Marin, and they said they have on their books that they replace five miles a year. If you're really concerned about an earthquake, I would think that your water and sewer lines are a big deal. And people think because out of sight, out of mind, and you're only going to replace them when they leak. Alameda County Water District just jacked up their water rates, and there is a big stink over that. And the thing that's kind of funny is that they claim that they have over 800 leaks a year. So they are going to put some of that money into replacing the pipes, but they haven't really spent it on it yet. And when you were talking about using reclaimed water, yesterday in the newspaper in the East Bay, East Bay Mud, actually, you can call the water company, and they'll come to your house and water your lawn with recycled toilet water. So they put it in a big tank and take it to your house, and they'll water your yard for you. It was in the paper. I've seen a lot of weird things, and if you have vegetables and stuff, I wouldn't use that water, because when they recycle the toilet water, they use 2.5 times stronger bleach than Clorox in that recycled toilet water. And now that we're blending our drinking water with recycled water, and more people are getting sick, I would think that more people would be concerned about replacing the pipes so that we can go to alternative technology to disinfect the water without putting any poison in it. And if people value their lives, the last thing you want to do is be drinking and recycling the toilet water, because you're taking other people's medicines, and that causes a lot of other problems on top of that. But most of the diseases, you're not, Dr. Win Parker said this, and chlorine causes collateral health damage. He said, "You're not only drinking someone else's medicine, you're drinking their disease." So the water and sewer lines should be mandatory to have that on some kind of book that replaced so many miles every year. In the last 10 years, I've taken a lot of college courses, and they, I've had five college books that says it's going to take over 16 trillion to replace the water and sewer lines nationwide. This would create a lot of jobs, and it would do a lot of things, and just remember, all those people that are coming to Google and Facebook, they all use the toilet, don't they? So, you know, bring them, and they will come, and then you're not going to have any water to flush it down. So I would think if, in this news article today, it says that your city, Palo Alto, has to reduce your water consumption 24%. And when you think about this, there's no more water to buy, and people are turning to their toilets.
Thank you. So with that, commissioners, thank you again for your service, for your coming tonight, and we really appreciate your comments, your questions, and your service. So thank you all very much.
That was dealing with the Palo Alto Police Officers Association, PPOA, and then the International Firefighters Association, IAFF, Local 1319. Then what you were just hearing, as we joined in progress in the pre-meeting, the joint session of the City Council and the Utility Advisory Commission, that was a packed, certainly a packed dais. Everybody was up there tonight. I think there's more people on the dais than there was actually in the council chambers. We're going to go on now to the Annual Earth Day Report Study Session and Sustainability Climate Action Plan update, and then there is several items on the consent calendar that you'll hear from. You'll also hear tonight the city manager's comments, which can be always interesting, informative, and entertaining, oral communications, which can be the same as well, and agenda additions and deletions. On the consent item calendar tonight, item number five is a finance committee recommends adoption of a budget amendment ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year 2015 to adjust the budgeted revenues and expenditures in accordance with the recommendation in the fiscal year 2015 Midyear Budget Review Report, and in adopt a resolution to amend the compensation plan for the Management Professionals Group to add a principal attorney. Item number six is staff recommendation that the city council adopt a resolution amending gas rate schedule, G to 10 compressed natural gas services to recover cap and trade regulation compliance costs, and approving new Palo Alto green gas rate scheduled, G to 10 to G compressed natural green gas service. And then item number seven is the approval of three contracts with Delta Dental for dental claim administration, Vision Service Plan for Vision Claim Administration, and Fully Insured Vision Plan, Life Insurance Company of North America, Cigna, for underwriting the city of Palo Alto's group life, Accidental Death and Dismemberment, AD&amp;D, and the Long-Term Disability Insurance LTD plans for up to three years for each contract. Item number, item number eight is the approval of a loan document on agreements providing $1 million for the rehabilitation of the Stevenson House, and adoption of a budget amendment ordinance appropriating funds from the residential housing in Lew Fund for this purpose. Item number nine is adoption of the amended ordinance amending Chapter 9.14 Smoking and Tobacco Regulations of the Palo Alto Municipal Code to establish new outdoor smoking restrictions in commercial areas and outdoor dining. Then we get on to action items, public hearing, adoption. Item number 11 is adoption of the ordinance amending chapters 16.14, 16.17, and 16.18 to adopt local amendments in the California Green Building Code and the California Energy Code. Then colleagues memo from Mayor Holman and councilmembers Burt Schmidt and Walbach regarding strengthening city engagement with neighborhoods. This was supposed to be at the end of March, on March 16th, but because of everything that was going on, it was moved to tonight. And then item number 12 is discussion of the appointment of the council members in the Board of Directors of the Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency, BAWSCA, for Bay Area Water Systems Financing Authority. And then that's part of intergovernmental legislative affairs, item there, and then, of course, council comments and announcements and adjournments. They have us going tonight. They have the action items going from about 9:35 to 10:00 p.m. For item number 10, item number 11 is going from 10:00 to 10:30. Item number 12, 10:30 to 10:45. I always like to put that up to Janati Go, he gives me the inside scoop there of exactly how, he always has a prediction. We'll see if that matches up with that, because we still have, we still have the Annual Earth Day Report Session and Sustainability Climate Action Plan update from 7:30 to 9:00 p.m. tonight. So we'll see where that goes. On this 4/20, I think it's interesting that on 4/20, with all of the smoking that's going on at UC Santa Cruz, and also at, up there at Hippie Hill in San Francisco, that they're going to talk about a outdoor dining, a new outdoor smoking restrictions in commercial areas and outdoor dining. So smoking and tobacco regulations here at the Palo Alto Municipal Code. And so no holiday here at 4/20 for the Palo Alto City Council. I would imagine that the Berkeley City Council and the Santa Cruz City Council have the night off, but Palo Alto's got work to do, and they're going to get to it, they're going to do the people's work.
I'd like to call the meeting back to order. Councilmembers, members of the public, staff. So this evening, we have our annual meeting about Earth Day. So it's the Annual Earth Day Report Study Session and Sustainability Climate Action Plan update. And before we go to staff, I have something here to share with you all and to recognize. So as we celebrate the 45th anniversary of Earth Day on Wednesday, the council would like to recognize and give kudos to several Gunn High School students who showed great leadership in getting water bottle filling stations installed at Gunn as a way to reduce creek litter and prevent waste from bottled water sold in vending machines. Funded by a grant from the City Public Works Watershed Protection Program, the students came up with the idea, assessed the current impact of litter from water bottles, worked with the PAUSD maintenance staff to get new units installed, and are providing outreach to students. Next fall, students will assess litter reduction as a result of installing these water bottle filling stations. Two of the students, Josh Kaplan and Ayton Grossman, and their advisor, Carolyn, or Carol Langston, are here tonight, so would you please stand, and we'll acknowledge your leadership and efforts. And is Ms. Langston here? And actually, if you will come down to the podium down here, the city clerk has something for the three of you in recognition of your efforts. So thank you for your leadership, your initiative, and we look forward to the results. Thank you very much. So with that, we turn to our staff. Gil, would you care to start your presentation?
Thank you, Mayor Holman. Mayor Holman, Vice Mayor Schmidt, councilmembers, citizens, I'm Gil Friend, I'm the Chief Sustainability Officer for the city. You created the Office of Sustainability about a year and a half ago to bring focus to the city's many sustainability efforts, and to help set a direction for the next phase of Palo Alto's sustainability leadership. We're here tonight to summarize what we've been doing, discuss where we might be going, and to invite your guidance on the work that's ahead. Before I start, I'd just like to acknowledge my staff, Benjamin Privet and Sarah Isabel Mo here at the dais with me, as well as about 20 members of city staff who've worked on this report, including Shiva Swaminathan from Utilities in the Room, Julie Weiss from Public Works, and quite a number of others. Over the next 15 or 20 minutes, I'd like to walk through these topics, look at the trends, both broadly and in this community, the status of our work, the approaches that we're taking in moving forward on sustainability and the Climate Action Plan, and share some observations about where we are and some of the actions that stand before us, and of course, to talk about next steps. Let me start with some trends. Look at the world around us, and want to also acknowledge city council, city attorney's office, who's advised us and guided us on this presentation, and notice that there are a number of legal issues that we're going to have to look at as we move into these conversations, so I want to offer that disclaimer here. We're in a world that's getting a lot hotter. We're in a world, in a Western United States, that's getting a lot wetter. We're in a utility industry that's getting riskier. This chart shows the weather-related utility outages over the last 20 years in the United States. We're in an environment where cities are getting bolder in the kinds of actions that they're taking. These are goals of the C40 cities around the world, notably, I call out Melbourne and Copenhagen, who have set goals of 100% climate neutrality, in the case of Copenhagen, by 2025, in the case of Melbourne, by 2020. And here in California, the United States, and just in the last few months, as we've been putting this report together, we've seen a number of bold declarations from our leaders. Governor Brown, who's set a new energy policy targets for California, President Obama, who has set them for the United States. Governor Brown, just in the last couple of weeks, new water goals, including the reduction targets that we are grappling with now on staff. And some of our colleague communities, Los Angeles, just in the last month, released their Climate Action Plan, which includes, in addition to looking at a mode shift of 50% out of private vehicles, imagine that for Los Angeles, but also capturing 50% of water needs from local resources, Vancouver, which is going to be 100% renewable over a similar interval. In this period, we've done a lot. There's more than 150 sustainability initiatives across city departments. You have many of those detailed in the attachment D of your report, all of them chronicled in a SharePoint database, ranging from local solar to the electrification question that a number of you spoke about before, and rolling out a sustainability dashboard to give us more visibility into our performance across the city. We continue to make progress on reducing our greenhouse gas emissions, down now about 37% from 1990 levels, on our ways to the state's 80% target. You can see that transportation and natural gas remain the big dogs in that race. Transportation, interestingly enough, VMTs, vehicle miles traveled, have gone up in the last couple of years as we come out of the recession. Because of changes in the fleet and technology, the greenhouse gas emissions have fluctuated a little bit, but not changed very much. So it's an indication of some of the external factors that bear on our work here, as well as the ones that we control ourselves. We've seen progress on reducing water use, progress on our zero-waste strategy. You'll notice here, flat in the last few years, but we're about to roll out residential and commercial composting in the next year and two, as well as increased efforts around construction and demolition waste to start to bring those numbers toward the 90% target that you set for us. Lots more in the pipeline, I'm not going to read these, but just to give you a sense of the range of activity that's going on across our organizations. And so how are we doing in relation to the strategic goals? Well, you could say that we're actually on track. If we are able to continue our 2005 to 2012 rate of reduction of emissions, we could actually hit the state's 80% by 2050 goal. Now, there's an if there, that's if we can maintain that pace of improvement. And in fact, our pace of improvement is not steady. This is showing you the rate of change in water, in, what do we have on top, natural gas, electricity, and water across our three different customer classes. It's not consistent, it's not a controlled process, this is something that we have an opportunity to work on in the coming years, to tighten that up. We're trying to bring all this together in the Sustainability and Climate Action Plan, which is an opportunity for you to choose the goals that we will pursue, set the trajectory that we'll pursue that on, and build out the roadmap that will guide the implementation. As I've talked with you about before, we've developed scenarios, have done an expert charrette, held an Ideas Expo open to the community, benchmarked the plans and work of other cities. We are now deep into the analysis phase of looking at tech- We are now deep into the analysis phase of looking at technical feasibility, economic feasibility, and the impacts that would result from combinations of measures, so we can bring you back a grounded set of strategies for your consideration later this spring, and building out the roadmap. So we've got coming up in May, the Climate Plan Summit, and of course, the intersection of the Comp Plan Summit. The intersection of the Climate Plan and the Comp Plan are critical. We'll be also hosting a virtual online summit for the community, both in the weeks before and following the Comp Plan Summit, and are hoping to bring draft recommendations to you late in June before you go on recess. Some of the key elements or domains of action that we're looking at are electrification or fuel switching, as we sometimes refer to it, the larger challenge of mobility and walkability, issues around water, and the questions of finance, not just how do we pay for this, but how do we structure the financial instruments that build the logic that we want into the decisions that we make. We're operating under a premise that the city managers articulated, that we go first. In other words, we don't ask the community to do things that we don't do ourselves, and so we try to lead by example wherever possible. We'll default to green, and we've begun this in our procurement process, moving from the environmentally preferable purchasing policy that you all created some years ago, which said, buy the environmentally preferable where it is possible, to turn that around and say, let's start with that. Let's buy the environmentally preferable period. That's where we start. And where it's not appropriate, where it's not cost-effective, where it doesn't fit duty requirements, let's of course adapt. We've begun that in a simple measure with office products, recycled paper, and toners. We've rolled it out into the fleet procurement, moving from CNG, compressed natural gas, as our vehicle of choice for sedans, to electric vehicles as our vehicle of choice. We think that could save us $1,000 to $1,500 per vehicle. So always looking for the economic as well as sustainability advantage going together where we can. And we think it's also important to look very strongly at performance-based regulation, not prescriptive regulation that tells people what to do, but performance regulation that says, here's the targets we need to hit, find the best and most creative and most effective way to do that. We need to do all this in a way that protects the common wealth, the ecological resources, the ecosystem services that sustain this community. We need to consider the impact of consumption. These are things that we are not directly responsible for, but if you consider that the impact of the airplane flights taken by people in this community probably exceeds the carbon impact of our natural gas use. The impact through the supply chain of the food that we buy and eat probably exceeds the impact of the road transportation. These aren't things that the city's responsible for, but if the community really cares about climate and carbon futures, it's something that we're going to want to discuss in coming years. And then, as you've heard some discussion in the previous study session, there's questions about the future of the utility, and in fact, what many people are calling the utility of the future. So let me address that last one in some detail because it's a big issue and it's a new one and it's very much on people's minds. There's a gathering storm facing this industry. Don't take my word for it. These are observations from Citicorp, UBS, Barclays, Bank of America, that are seeing major structural threats facing the utility industry as we see the rise of cost-effective solar, local storage, and so forth. Utility bonds will underperform the market, is the prediction of one of these financial institutions. One of the reasons for this is a phenomenon called grid defection. We're seeing a threshold approaching soon where the combined price of local solar and local storage could be competitive with grid-provided power. And in many jurisdictions, we're seeing people wanting to get off the grid to become their own utilities. In other parts of the country, investor-owned utilities are fighting this trend. Here at Palo Alto, I think with a municipal utility, we have the opportunity to think about how we use that trend and lead it and contribute to it in a way that is healthy for our utility. But that's going to be a big challenge to think through. There are big trends that are driving this. This is a projected cost curve of electric vehicles with a 200-mile range. I could show you similar curves for the cost of photovoltaics, battery power, autonomous vehicles, sensor technology, exponential rates of change in a half a dozen key technologies that will shift the fundamental economics of this industry potentially, and certainly something we need to consider as part of our planning. This is State of California's forecast on solar forecasts, as another example. All these curves have this kind of shape. So these raise big questions that we would do well to start considering before we have to consider them, so that we can chart our own destiny rather than react to events or shocks that hit us. And many of these issues affect some of the concerns you expressed before about reliability, the impact of microgrids, for example, on grid stability is something to consider. And really fundamentally, we need to look at what is the business model of a utility company in this kind of possible future? Do we continue to buy, broker, and distribute energy, as we've been doing? Do we deliver efficiency services as a commodity that we sell? Do we sell and manage distributed generation and storage that doesn't cannibalize our business, but becomes part of our business? Do we sell management, service, financing, and data? It's an open question to think about, how do we reposition this organization in what may be a very dramatically changing business environment in this industry? So let me zoom out for the last couple of minutes here. These are big questions. They are challenging ones. They are things that many people think are impossible. But we know here that barriers can fall. You know, when Roger Bannister broke the four-minute mile in 1954, the record had stayed steady for nine years at four minutes and, what, 13 seconds? Once he broke that record in '54, within six months, somebody else broke it and broke it at 3:57. Within 18 months, four other people broke it in the same race. So once barriers fall, they sometimes fall very quickly. Let me step back another step and just come back to the question we've talked about before of why sustainability matters. At a very direct level, this is a matter of mitigating our risk. We're facing risks around climate, drought, and business disruption. We need to build resilience, the ability of the city to withstand shocks and stress that may come at us from these and other factors. There are rewards here in terms of quality of life, economic benefits, innovation driver, the leadership that we have played in the region and the world, and the influence that we are able to provide to other communities. And as we've talked about many times before, this is the right thing to do. And I would note that whether to do the right thing is not an economic decision. It's a decision, it's a moral decision that we make or don't make. How to do the right thing, when to do it, those are economic decisions, and we need to make those very carefully and diligently. So the path ahead of us, I think, requires some bold moves, most fundamentally with the greenhouse gas goals we want to set. We need to be looking at moving to not just reducing impacts, but net positive buildings, as will be required by the State of California in just a few years. More agility in the way that we operate so that we can be experimental and learn quickly on a faster learning cycle, because frankly, a lot of the things that we need to do, a lot of the opportunities ahead of us, no one's done yet. No one's quite sure how to do them. And we need to learn as we go and find a safe and appropriate way to do that. A lot of this will come down to behavior change. Some of it is policy, some of it is technology, much of it is the choices that our citizens choose to make in our personal lives. And so how do we most effectively support and encourage those changes? And how do we innovate the kind of financial structures that enable us to do this work? We have many levers, some of them we've used before, utility incentives, legal mandates, ordinances, and regulations, new services to provide, the example that we set with our own procurement, and some edgier ideas that we're hearing around the community around carbon pricing and carbon taxes as possible alternatives to look at. Microsoft, you may know, has established internal carbon pricing regime where part of their internal cost allocations include cost of carbon, and it's accelerated their reductions and saved them real money. We're talking with them about how they've done that and whether or not that might be appropriate for us. Several of you mentioned REX and offsets before. We've done this very successfully with electricity, to use REX as a bridge to a climate-neutral electricity strategy, voluntary program, action of council, offsetting 100% of our electricity, and then building a carbon-neutral portfolio over four years. We could conceivably do the same thing with natural gas. We have a voluntary program underway now, Palo Alto Green Gas. We could offset the entire gas emissions and be a carbon-neutral utility by an action that you take, and we could build a trajectory to taking out the impact of natural gas. Let me be clear, I am not an advocate for electrification or fuel switching. I think I am an advocate for a carbon-neutral city, in which that's one of the critical issues that we need to look at. So steps ahead, we'll need to discuss and ultimately adopt a sustainability and climate action plan. Again, we'll be bringing that to you later in June. I would encourage you, though, to think about goals that you might set in advance of adopting a complete plan. The California goal of 80% reduction in greenhouse gases by 2050 may be something for us to just say, yeah, we'll do at least that. And how much more we'll do is to be determined by further analysis. We're evaluating electrification strategies. We'll be back to you, as you requested, probably in May, with a plan of action about how to pursue that diligently. We're exploring development of mobility as a service pilots, both locally and with other partners in the region, and we need to explore the implications of changes to the utility's business model. You'll be deciding tonight on the new green building ordinance and energy reach code. We'll be starting, Peter Purnajad and his team will be starting immediately following that adoption on the next code cycle, continuing to ratchet up our standards and services there. Mentioned new financing strategies, the sustainability dashboard work, which just kicked off last week, will give us a much more comprehensive and granular view and flexible view of our performance data, so we can understand better what we're doing, where the leverage points are, and how effectively. We're being, to ultimately decide our trajectory for the next five, 10, and 20 years. So you know, the question for us to ask as a small and innovative city is, are we a drop in the bucket in the face of the global climate crisis, or are we going to make waves? So I'll stop there, and I'd love to hear your thoughts and your questions.
Thank you for the presentation. And council members, questions, comments? I know you have them. Councilmember Minnis.
Well, lots of thoughts at this point, but one of the areas, Gil, I'd like to push on right away is we are extremely enthusiastic about electric cars. While I haven't gone electric yet, I've gone hybrid, and we're all delighted with their reduction in gas mileage. However, and I've thought of this all the way through your presentation, there is always a reaction in some way to that, or something that is positive, something that's negative. The negative to that is gas tax, and how do we maintain our highways? So that's, while we may not think of that as a sustainable kind of concern when we're looking at this, it actually is one, because pretty much the roads run under the gas tax. And without that gas tax, it's going to be very difficult for us to continue that without. And so what you're talking about tonight are a number of trade-offs and switches. And so we need to look, that's one small thing. You've talked about the natural gas and all-clean electric, and if you were listening earlier, you could hear that was a discussion on the council, as to which direction should we go, and not everyone feels the same way about giving up on natural gas and going to all-clean electric. And if there's a cost, there's also any number of other ramifications. But it would seem as though, when I went through this, and I really admire your reach and your push and so forth, but there are certainly a number of equal and opposite concerns that at least I thought of right away. So I know you're going to get lots of questions and lots of feedback from the rest of the council as well, some of them who have been doing this with the city now for more years than, say, Mark and I have. And I appreciate the report, and I hope we do make waves. I hope that is our goal, rather than being a drop in the bucket. But I would also say, I think we've already made waves. I think that's one of the things that Palo Alto can feel really good about, is starting with Palo Alto Green Way back, it's made a dent. So one more thing, Mayor Holman. The water, which earlier tonight, Councilmember DeBois talked about, and I think we're all very concerned with the water. I noticed Phil Boblo is out here tonight. How do we recycle it? Where will it go? How will it go there? And it would seem as though when we're discussing sustainability, that's probably one of the most obvious concerns that we have right now. It's one of the ones that we see. The electricity and the gas, we don't see, except the results of, whereas with water, we're all very aware of what the water does for us, how we deal with the water. And I think probably almost everyone in the community at this point is trying to think, what do we do for more water? How do we get down to our 24%? I think we're actually at 20%, though, if I recall. Am I right, Councilwoman? City manager, we're at 20%?
As far as the target reduction that we have?
Right.
That's going to be changed to 24%.
Right, I know. I'm saying we're at 20 now.
Well, we had, no, we had, last year, we had hit 16% reduction, which was the highest performance, as we mentioned, I think, last week, of any city in Santa Clara County.
So we have a way to go there as well. So lots of thoughts. You've prompted lots of what-ifs as well, and so thanks for your report.
Thank you, Councilmember. Let me just say two things very briefly, because I want to hear other people's thoughts as well. On the point you raised of many of these issues having equal and opposite drivers, this is really part of how we approach all the issues that we're looking at. We don't see the opposite as trade-offs. It's not a matter of choosing between economic well-being and climate well-being. And the challenge is to say, both of those are important. How do we invent solutions that address them both well? And so that's easier said than done, but once that frame is on the table, sometimes that can be done, and that's the way that we approach all these issues. With regard to water, the focus for city staff and the community right now is how do we hit the immediate targets that the state has set for us? How do we do this 24% goal right now? And that's certainly the priority, at least for the next few months. We also need to be thinking, at least beginning to think, about the long-range strategic implications here. There's an article in Science Magazine two weeks ago that estimated 80-plus percent chance of multi-decadal mega-drought in the West in the latter half of the century. Now, that's not right now, but that's some of what may be ahead of us, implies very profound structural changes in how we do things in California. So we don't drop everything and think about that now, that's down the road, but we also don't wait until that hits us to think about it. The reason I say that is that some of the things that we would consider for that longer-range eventuality might actually be beneficial for us now in the shorter term. And those are some of the kinds of questions that we are looking at in the climate plan process. So thank you for your thoughts.
Councilmember Wolbach.
Thank you very much for the report. One thing that actually, as you probably heard, I mentioned during our, immediately prior to this, session with the Utilities Advisory Commission, was the issue of rainwater capture. And as I alluded to, this is something that probably incorporates multiple departments. And so you might be well-poised to help facilitate at least a discussion about this. I'm curious if you have any thoughts that you'd like to share about rainwater capture, whether from storm drains, from properties, in the design of new buildings, and future design of our streets, et cetera.
Rainwater capture is certainly one of the options that we need to consider. As I mentioned before, Los Angeles is looking at getting 50% of their water use from rainwater capture. You know, you look at a city like LA, about three-quarters of the city is paved, most of their rainfall goes not just down the drain to the sea, but through sewage treatment plants to the sea, and incur in great expense. They're seeing really significant economic benefit from shifting that strategy to a capture and storage strategy. So we might want to look at that. We're already incorporating gray water readiness into the green building ordinance. In the coming ordinance, we'll be looking at net-zero water, as well as net-zero energy. There are, of course, questions of when and how, what are the mechanisms? How do you ensure that it's cost-effective? How do we ensure that... How do we ensure that the trades can deliver on the requirements that we put forward? But we're already seeing a number of net zero water buildings being built in the West. Somebody made a design decision to figure out how to do that. And with a combination of efficiency of water use, water capture and water recycling, often on-site in the building itself, not down to a sewage treatment plant and back, we're seeing the beginnings of the development of that kind of building technology. So certainly something we should look at. One of the possible benefits, if we do move to a more mobility-based strategy, if that in fact requires less parking garages and less road surfaces to provide the mobility benefits that the community needs, you have more land available for water capture among the other kinds of functions that land could serve. So decarbonizing may be related, may be tied into depaving. We'll see how that goes. Certainly one of the, in all the things we're looking at, we need to consider, what are the local resources that we have? The sun that falls on the community, the rain that falls on the community? How do we capture and use those resources most effectively right here?
Gil, could I add one thing? Phil Bobo, Public Works, about rainwater capture that we just saw today that was very exciting and the driver for it. I don't know if you've seen this, the, where they took out the old Bloomingdale's and now they've built the new Bloomingdale's. One thing they're putting right where the old Bloomingdale's was is two 30,000 gallon underground cisterns, or whatever you want to call it, tank for rainwater capture. These will be the two largest certainly in our neck of the woods by far. And they did it because our statewide regulations that we enforce locally require that when you build a new structure of a certain size and, and prevent the infiltration of water, you have to offset that essentially. And their choice was rather to try to offset it like we did at Mitchell Park with swales and green features that would absorb the water. They decided they, they just didn't have the space to do that. So they've built these huge underground tanks and it, it's probably a harbinger of things to come.
Thank you very much. And I just encourage staff and my colleagues to continue thinking about how we can do this in a really effective way and how to make this a priority moving forward. Thank you.
But, I'm sorry, did you have something else, Gil? Vice Mayor Schmidt.
Yeah, I wanted to thank you for your presentation tonight and the report. I loved the, the data that you presented in it, both the historical context and perspective as well as a look at where we're going and look forward to your new database that you say will be ready in a week or so.
Let me clarify, we started work on it last week. It's going to be two or three months to have that up and running.
Good, but I think to get the community on board with what we're doing, that's the type of thing that, that would work well. I certainly would emphasize, I guess, the issue of water. We are tied to the South Sierra and you have a very startling figure in there of warming climate. And since our water is stored through snow, it's very upsetting that even if we have wet winters, if it doesn't come down in snow in the South Sierras, we will, will feel and experience that. And we experience it not just in our water flows and, and access to water, but in hydropower. We are very dependent on hydropower and so very sensitive to the flows and our need to, to go to the grid in times where the hydropower is not available. The other thing that I found very interesting in your presentation was your connection to the summit and the Com Plan is you are coinciding some of your work and your public outreach with the Com Plan Summit and our, our work on the Com Plan. And I guess I would encourage that the sustainability effort and the Com Plan effort try and coordinate as much as possible. I guess I am concerned in a wider thing that we don't just focus on our boundaries and draw a boundary about what we do and the, the rest of the world is out there. But that we get engaged with the State Demographer's Office. State Demographer has been reassessing the long-term outlook for California and reducing growth projections over time, which is very important for a sustainable state. The planned area, which is connected to the State Demographer's Office, is beginning their update for 2017. And they have their first meeting, I think, public meetings next month. And what happens in the Bay Area is important to, to us and, and our role. And it ties into our Com Plan in our role in Bay Area growth. And our tendency in the last decade has been to a leader of job creation in the Bay Area and probably in California. I, I note that in the last six or seven years now, that the growth of housing in Palo Alto is about between one-third and one-half of the growth in jobs that is taking place in Palo Alto. So we are creating a greater deficit between employed residents in the city and jobs in the city. So while we can focus on green buildings for new office space and be very efficient during the workday, people are leaving the city to live elsewhere where they're spending on cars, on gas, on other parts of the sustainable world is, is not the same as us. So the question is what impact are we having by having a jobs-housing imbalance as great as it is? And I think a coordination between our sustainability work and our Com Plan work would be very effective in the long run of creating not just beneficial impacts here, but impacts that help our neighbors, help the Bay Area, help the state of California reach a sustainable level that makes sense. So I would encourage you as we go through that process that you try and reach out and, and make connections.
Good, thank you. Councilmember Burt.
Well, let me first dive into the water issue because in one sense, it's perhaps an even greater challenge. And I also think it may be a more achievable challenge to overcome. So we, we know that we not only have the drought today that is potentially a harbinger of what the future may be, but I was at a local government commission conference where three panelists among the top water experts in the state made a point that was striking to me, which is that we now know from historical data that the 20th century was the wettest century in the last two millennia in California. And so when we talk about a new future on water, it's actually more drastic than that, that our baseline in which the state essentially established both our expectations for water availability and the allocations commensurate with what we thought would be the normal water ability, water availability, was based upon a century that was anomalous. And so our baseline is, is worse than, much worse than, than we thought. So that's bad news. The good news is actually that this is probably a, an area that the solutions are within sight. And the drought may be driving us and spurring us to act sooner and more aggressively than we otherwise would have, but the opportunities are still the same. We have, we already have been working on a plan to drastically expand our non-potable recycled water. And we have Phil Bobo here who can give us more insights on that. And that was going to be a major new water system distribution up Page Mill Road for irrigation and potentially toilet water for all those jobs primarily. We now have to really look at whether it's wise to spend those tens of millions of dollars on a water distribution system, parallel to our potable water distribution system, or to invest it in advanced recycling technology of potable water that would either be percolated back into the ground or blended or other decisions that we have on the horizon. These aren't, these are really important decisions and ones that we need to begin to agendize and give some, at least preliminary policy direction, which will probably mean initiating studies, perhaps by the water, the Santa Clara Valley Water District, to give us a data-based foundation for alternatives and which way we should go. Because right now, we, we aren't taking either direction because we're kind of like deer caught in headlights. We don't know which of these major capital investments to go down path to the left or to the right, and we need to begin to tackle that. But that coupled with water efficiency use in the homes, water recapture that we've heard about through gray water and otherwise, and then, and then really water efficiency in our landscaping, which is an even bigger factor. And just like it's, if we really have our water supply in California what it is, it's not smart to grow rice in the desert. It's not really long-term very smart to have big lawns that we don't have insects and birds that can rely off of natural ecosystems in our vegetation, but instead they're kind of green sterile lands. They look great, they feel kind of cool, but they really aren't very progressive. And we should have them where they're recreational and people actually use them. But to have big landscapes for decorative lawns is probably not a wise solution, and I think we're going to need to move in that direction. And that alone is a big impact. So we, I think the water issue is imminently solvable, as much as it feels overwhelming in the midst of this drought. And I just want to talk about a couple of the other aspects that we've, we've been addressing. First, the notion of renewable energy credits, whether they be electricity or gas. We treated them as a bridge for our renewable electricity supply. And I think that's the way we should think of them in natural gas. They're not the long-term solution, but they may help us get from where we are to where we are intending to go. And I also want to encourage staff to look at, within our natural gas, another partial solution, which is renewable natural gas. And there are supplies available. We have compressed natural gas dispensing for vehicles, our municipal fleet and for the public. And this is, my understanding is a no-cost impact alternative. And I'm frankly disappointed we haven't yet moved anywhere on evaluating that. So I really want to encourage staff to look at renewable natural gas. You know, we, we for instance, use it in, as part of our renewable energy from landfill natural gas. Well, these are the sorts of sources that are now being able to be purchased for natural gas. So our, we may have a multifaceted approach on this fuel switching and gas, which is switching to heat pumps and other electric-based utilities and renewable natural gas and other efficiency, building efficiency that reduces the need for use of natural gas. So as I was saying earlier with the UAC, we may not have the end solution in sight, but we can begin moving down that path. And if it's getting, you know, 25% reduction in our natural gas in the next five to 10 years, and then at that time, then we start looking at how do we, what's really the plan for the remainder? And so I, I want to look at the, also the, the broad goal. Gil's had this stretch goal or moonshot that he's described. And I think we should as a council, look at when we agendize a policy-setting action item on this. And if I look at the data, I believe that we've in the last, our 80% reduction is from a 1990 baseline. We've achieved, I believe, as of 2014, 38% reduction in 24 years. So if we merely continue the trend we've been on, we would have 80% reduction in 2040, not 2050, but 2040, 25 years from now. And so I think that 80% by 2040 is not a stretch goal at all. That's just keeping the trend line we're on. So I would encourage us to set a goal not less aggressive than 80% by 2040. And then perhaps we set two goals, that and 100% by 2050 and maybe a 80% by 2030 as a stretch goal, or something along those lines. But let's begin to consider that. But this is not, so for almost all other cities and states and countries, 80% by 2050 is an aspiration. They are not on the path to coming close to that. We are actually on that path to achieve it by 2040. And we shouldn't take our foot off the gas, so to speak. We should stay on that path. And as was stated earlier, I mean, in our transportation, we have 60% of our greenhouse gases from transportation because we eliminated our electricity mark. It's not because the transportation went up and we just took the electricity out of the equation. But yeah, I just want to make sure everybody's clear on that because I've, I've kind of seen those numbers get tossed around. So I would really like to also see data, and it may be just projections, but I'm, I'm still waiting to see good data on what's the level of adoption of, of zero emission vehicles today, advanced emission vehicles like hybrids today. What are the trend lines? What have they been in our community? And what do people anticipate purchasing as their next vehicle based upon what will be the cost of those vehicles that are projected? So if somebody's told that you can buy a, an electric vehicle for $25,000 within a few years, and you say, what vehicle do you expect to buy in five years if it's going to be at competitive pricing or nearly so? I suspect we're going to see a very high adoption. And then we can just do, use that and say, okay, well, what's, what's the life of, of our vehicle fleet? And then how long will it take to turn over all of our older vehicles and get them out of, the bulk of them out of our, our fleet? And so I actually think that that also is a pretty obtainable goal. And, and that actually isn't, we're only going to facilitate that on the margins. We're going to make sure that we have policies in place to have adequate electric charging, that we've thought about smart grid systems and metering systems, so it's off-hour charging of cars rather than peak hour, a number of measures that will facilitate that. But we won't have to be the primary drivers. That's a combination of the broader economic trends and what are the intrinsic characteristics of our community, which is a community that largely shares that value structure and frankly has disposable income so that people are acting on their values sooner than many other people do. So they have the values and they, we have more ability to act on those than most communities. Now that, that doesn't, because of those things, especially our financial ability as a city and as a community, that doesn't mean that everybody is going to be able to do this as rapidly as we can. And, and we shouldn't go bragging about that, some of the things that result from our own affluence. But we can lead and we can identify obstacles, including regulatory and legal obstacles that our, our local legislators have said that they are ready and raring to address whatever obstacles we identify are in the way of us being able to achieve these objectives because they know that we are setting trends that others will be attempting to follow in short order behind that. So we're not going to be long-term outliers. We're just going to be ahead of the curve and help, help achieve that curve. So thanks for all this good work and we have a lot before us, but I actually think it's, we have a basis for optimism in our goals in both. it's, we have a basis for optimism in our goals, in both our greenhouse gases and our sustainable water system, that I think that technology and innovation really allow us to, to have within our sights some major achievements, and continue to have this done at low costs. And I'll add one note, that it looks, and we want to see the data, but the recycling of the water is likely to be at lower cost than we're paying for hetch-hetching, so it'll actually reduce our water cost. Just like our renewables, we're having 100% clean energy in our electricity, and we're at 20% below PGE. So these are not necessarily, this assumption that we're going to have trade-offs between our environmental goals and our economic goals. They just don't appear to be the case. So thanks.
Councilmember Berman. Berman, yes, thank you.
So a couple of quick questions, and thank you guys very much for all the work that you've done, and all the work that we're going to ask you to do in the future. So on Staff Report, page eight, packet page 13, there's a chart, Figure One, Greenhouse Gas Emissions for City Operations by Activity Category. And you allude to the fact that greenhouse gas emissions have increased a bit for buildings and other facilities, I think in large part because some facilities have come online that were previously offline, and, and we can all understand that. I didn't see, and maybe I missed, a more thorough explanation for why the solid waste facilities, greenhouse gas emissions have gone up 2X over two years ago.
Is Phil Bobble still here? Phil, can I bring you up?
I really just wanted a chance to say hi to Phil. Hi, Phil. Good to see you.
I'm, I'm not sure where you're, how you're concluding that we've gone up by twice.
I could be completely misinterpreting the, it's on packet page 13.
Let us look at that. That, that doesn't compute for me.
Gotcha. Works for me, thank you. Page 12 of the report, packet page 17. Oh, now I'm missing it. So I, my copy, I just can't read what that bottom-left quadrant is, on the, on the pie chart.
Microphone, Gil.
Yeah, the bottom, the bottom-left of the pie is, is air travel.
Air, okay.
It's about 21% of the total. These are estimates based on aggregate numbers in the region, I believe. They're not specific to here. We're, we'll be trying to drill in and get tighter numbers on some of these, working with UC Berkeley and some others in the coming year.
Thank you. And even, you know, as estimates, this was incredibly informative, especially the, as we talk a lot about natural gas, how space heating and water heating, you know, I kind of understood that those were the two big drivers, but I didn't understand, or fully kind of comprehend that that's, I mean, the great majority of our natural gas usage. I didn't compute the numbers, but it's, what, 13 out of 15%, so, quick math, and that's 88% or something like that. I mean, it's a huge, huge amount.
And cooking, which is the thing that people often throw up as, as an objection to electrification, is a very small piece of the puzzle.
Yeah.
You know, to be clear, water heating is going to be easier to get at than space heating.
Okay.
But those two together are the lion's share of that.
And is that because the technology for water heating has, has improved faster, or become more efficient? Why is that? I guess I should ask.
It's because the availability, the technology improvement, the availability of the heat pump water heaters that was alluded to earlier, and if you think about space heating, it involves a lot having to do with the structure of a building.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, makes sense. And then on page 15, going along with what Councilmember Burt was talking about, in terms of the purpose of REX being to get us to 100, you know, as, as a bridge, it looks like on this chart that, at least, you know, as of today, we're going to have to rely on REX again in about 10 years.
No, I think you can read this differently. This says that we're going to have to, these, these are the, these are the large solar purchases that we have in place. We're going to have to make additional large solar purchases going forward. So I think that's one conclusion to draw from this. The other factor is that below the zero line is hydro. About 50% of our portfolio is hydroelectric, so the strategy is premised on stable hydroelectric supplies, and I think that's the question we need to think about there. What if those supplies are not stable?
Sure.
How does that affect the strategy going forward? Or how do we prepare for that contingency?
But so it just tells us that, yeah, as we talked about in the, in the study session with the UAC, that, you know, we need to stay proactive on identifying good, good options and opportunities, I guess. So one of the things that, that was brought up earlier is, you know, landscaping and big lawns, and kind of are those, a thing of the past, at least, you know, to the extent that everyone has them today. Have we looked at all, and I, a couple of us got an email from a frustrated resident who alluded to the lawn outside of the Vrinkenada Library, which I haven't had a chance to drive by since I received the email, so I haven't looked at it recently myself, but have we done an analysis of, you know, all of the different kind of aesthetic lawns that aren't really used functionally as lawns on city property, and, you know, thought about better, more efficient uses for those spaces?
We, we in fact have. We just had several meetings about that today, and so the city is, is developing its own water plan, the same as we're asking everybody else in the service area to do, that will withdraw water from, from primarily ornamental uses, ornamental turf, in the case of turf for playing fields, that will probably be protected, because there are safety issues involved there, and other more selective, careful choices across the entire landscape that we manage, yes.
Great. You know, we've talked, remind me, sorry, what in specific you want to hear, you know, you want us to, to address tonight, or is it just kind of, I mean, you've given us a lot of information, a lot of it's incredibly helpful, but I want to make sure that I provide you feedback, if there are certain things that you're looking for feedback on.
I, I think all the comments so far have been enormously helpful. I want to, I want to hear your mind on these issues. Now, there's a lot of pieces of this puzzle, so grab the pieces that are most interesting to you. But I, I, if there's any one thing I would request your guidance on, is this question of how, what kind of goals do we want to think about? Do we want to, you know, do we want to sign on to the state of California 80 by 50, which is a completely reasonable option to do? Do we want to do something somewhat more aggressive, greatly more aggressive? So just, you know, I don't expect you to have a decision on that until you see the specifics of what might be required, but getting a sense of how you think about that, what questions come to mind for you as you think about it, what would help guide you in making that evaluation, that would be very helpful to us right now.
Great. So Councilmember Burt spoke about how the trends that we've had in terms of carbon GHG reductions since, I can't talk all of a sudden, since 1990, and how we've made great progress. I'm assuming that a lot of that progress was the low-hanging fruit, but if not, then great, because that means there's a lot of low-hanging fruit left to grab. But I agree that we should at least plan to stay on that trend line, if not be more accelerated than we already have been. So if it's 80% reductions by 2040, or a couple of years before 2040, if that's to kind of push us to go harder and faster and stronger than we've been going, you know, I definitely think that, you know, there's, there's, the need to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions hasn't abated, it hasn't gone away. So we need to keep on, you know, going down along the trend that we are, getting more creative. I'm going to feel like I'm repeating myself in a minute because of the conversation we just had with Utilities Advisory Commission, so I'm going to try to, you know, resist from doing that. But obviously, fuel switching or electrification is something that a lot of us are interested in. We're fully cognizant of the fact that there are going to be complications along the way that we have to be very aware of, and, and, you know, have, have a conversation about, but it's definitely something that I'm interested in. I think Councilmember Wolbach's point about the rainwater capture, and I'm curious to, I might go check out what Stanford's doing, you know, is definitely something that we need to consider. I'm encouraged to hear Councilmember Burt think that, you know, this is a very achievable problem that we have, but let's try to move as fast as possible in coming up with a plan, also so that maybe we can serve as a role model to other communities about kind of the, the easy ways to either be more efficient with our water usage, or kind of create supply through water recycling. So that's kind of, you know, that plus everything that I said during the UAC study session are my thoughts. I'm also curious to hear from the audience, I think, I don't know if 90% of you guys are staff, I don't think you are, because I recognize some resident faces from out there, but I'm impressed by how many folks are here from the community who, who clearly are passionate and care about this, and I think that gives us and staff a sense of the priority that this is for, for Palo Alto.
Councilmember Phil Seth.
Thanks very much. So thank you guys for putting together all this data. I, I wanted to ask a question about fuel switching, fuel switching, which is in page 19 of the packet. There's a, there's 19 of the packet, there's a chart that looks like this. And if you look at the top one, which is natural gas consumption, it looks to me like about 1/3 of our natural gas consumption is residential, and the other 2/3 is a combination of commercial and municipal, mostly commercial. Question I had was, in most of the dialogue that I've heard about natural gas usage reduction has been about, you know, heat pump water heaters, and, you know, clothes dryers and things like that. Most, I mean, all that's residential kind of stuff, I assume, right? And are we looking at measures that would impact the 2/3 that's used by commercial, as well as just residential?
Yes, we are. And in the plan, proposed plan that we'll bring back, you will talk across the board of this entire fleet of natural gas uses. Many of our commercial customers, certainly the larger ones, are already at work on these issues. Utilities has programs working with customers on demand reduction. But you're right to point out that, you know, clearly with 2/3 of natural gas, half the water, 80% of electricity, is from commercial sector. So that has to be addressed as part of any plan.
Okay, thanks very much.
Yes.
Councilmember DeBois.
On, on water, I'd like to emphasize, echo, I think, two of the points that have been made, you know, if there are ways to accelerate recycled water in the city, I think there's interest in that. And then also just maybe ramping up incentives on water-efficient landscaping. I think, I think we already have some, but, you know, maybe there's more we can do in that area. So I think Councilmember Berman pointed out the one chart about kind of the scope, what you call the scope three emissions, things that are outside the city, like air travel and food supply. I was interested in a chart from the appendix, I think page two of Appendix A, which was from the old plan, that kind of broke it down, included a lot of those external uses. So are we going to be seeing an update of this chart, I guess, as part of your plan? Kind of the total greenhouse gases, and breakdown by commuting patterns, and that kind of thing?
Our intention at this point is to include it in the, in the climate action plan. We don't include it in the reporting, because it's not part of the reporting protocols that are expected of us as a city. We report on the things that we have control over. But as a community with a commitment to dealing with the climate crisis, it needs to be part of our conversation.
Okay, so I think you just answered my next question, which is, when we talk about 80% reduction, it's not from this total greenhouse gas, it includes things like your food supply? It's only on the stuff within the community?
The way cities have been doing it, as I understand it, is not to include that, is to report on the, on the, on the reportable components of what we, what we, the scope one and two, what we burn and what we buy, the energy that we buy, but not the food and air travel. This is a place where I think we have the option to decide to do it the way everybody else has done it, or to broaden the scope. And I think it's an open question for us. It's a lot harder, as you'd imagine, to think about how we get at those, because those are very much behaviorally rooted.
Yeah. And does commuting, is that all one and two?
Commuting is in there, the, the, commuting is one and two, and you see that in the road travel.
Okay. So all, no matter where that commuting is, it's included?
Yeah.
Does that include people cutting through town and going?
No, the, the, the transportation model looks at people traveling into Palo Alto, out of Palo Alto, and within Palo Alto. It doesn't count people traveling, traveling through.
Okay, okay, thank you for clarifying that. I also thought, in this appendix, there was an interesting example of using landfill gas to drive the biosolids incinerator, and it was, it was kind of a great win-win, right? And I just wonder if the plan is, are, do we still have low-hanging fruit, those kinds of win-wins, or again, is most of the low-hanging fruit picked already?
Well, in, in my experience, if you play your cards right, the tree has a way of bending over and giving you more low-hanging fruit, once you've gathered, gathered the first crop of it. So there's still more to be done, as the economic shift, as we get smarter, as, as the technologies change. We'll continue to look at that, both improving operations within existing technologies, as well as looking for technology replacement where that makes sense.
So, you know, I kind of get the sense you're asking us to get to the point of agreeing to a big goal, or, you know, what the goal is. I'd like to see a goal supported by facts, you know, not, not that we'll know everything upfront, but hopefully it'll be supported to a large portion. And I don't want us to get caught up in this abstract goal without really understanding economics behind it, how technically reasonable it is. I mean, I think we can be cutting-edge, but we need to understand how far over the edge we are, and how we can leverage the power of the market in terms of innovation. And I do think, you know, we have a unique opportunity to be a test bed, you know, we have this utility, we should be easier to work with than the larger utilities. I mean, hopefully innovators come to us and see us that way. But it's been said at the UAC meeting, we need to keep the lights on, we need to have reasonable rates for our payers. And, you know, I think we all, we want to be progressive, but, you know, if we try and fail, that's not the example we want to be, right? So, you know, I think, you know, I'm still, like, obviously you're going to come back with a more detailed plan, but thinking about what the goal should be, I would say that continuing the improvements we've been making, I don't think is necessarily a given. It's not easy to keep continually making those improvements, and so it's going to be harder and harder to eke out returns, and it's going to cost more, and it's going to require more focus. And so I don't assume necessarily we're on the path, and if you look at our progress, it hasn't really been a smooth curve, it's kind of been start and stops, which you would There was a short discussion here about kind of net zero and performance-based goals, and it was kind of presented, like, this is the way I read it, was, it was kind of a choice between prescriptive approaches and performance-based approaches. And I'd like to suggest, I'd like to see us do both, you know, and so when we get to things like land use, we talk about zoning for what we want, but I think we could, we could zone for what we want, and we could set performance requirements and targets. So I don't necessarily see them as an either-or kind of choice. So, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember. Could I respond to a couple of the points?
Absolutely.
Sure. So thank you for the clarification, performance-based goals, not versus prescription, prescriptive, there's a combination of both of those, but there's new territory for us to explore in performance-based. I think that was the point we were trying to make there. I agree with you that continuing the trajectory we've been on is not a given. It requires commitment and diligence to do that. The, the trajectory that Councilmember Burt referred to before includes the one-year big drop of the, eliminating the electricity footprint, and that's not something, you know, it's averaged out over all those years, but that's not something that we get to do every year. So it'll take some diligent focus here. I, I do respectfully disagree with your assumption that it's going to get harder and more expensive to make these changes in the future. That's not borne out by experience in other cities and in companies around the world. So, and we'll have to see the specifics. To your point that we need to look at the specifics, absolutely so. We will bring you as many of those as we can, as fully buttressed as we can, but let's be clear, if we're going to do a 25-year plan, say to 2040, as Councilmember Burt suggested, we're not going to be able to nail down every piece of that plan, because, you know, the horizon recedes. We can save with a lot of clarity what the next five years would be, perhaps the next 10 years, but who knows what the technologies will be on the table in 15 years. So you're going to face, I think, a pretty interesting challenge, which is choosing a direction in which you have very substantial certainty about our ability to fulfill it, or possibly setting a goal that is a challenge, where the direction is clear, where every or possibly setting a goal that is a challenge, where the direction is clear, where every step of the road is not yet clear. And you basically challenge the staff to say 80 by 40, or whatever the number is, figure it out. And come back to us periodically with specific plans that are documented, grounded, analyzed, and we move step by step to filling that in. So I think that's the challenge there. Last thing, very briefly, because it's really important, a number of you have raised that you talked about the opportunity to be a test bed, but not at the expense of keeping the lights on. Total agreement there. My first conversation a year and a half ago with Val Fong, Val, I hope if you're here, you permit me to say this. Val said, "Before you say anything, I want to make it clear to you that I will not entertain any suggestion that compromises reliability, quality, or safety." And I said, "Absolutely not. I will never suggest anything that does." But also, I just want to question the assumption that many people share, that the kinds of changes we're talking about necessarily mean compromising those values. They don't, we won't.
Thanks for that clarification.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Scharf.
Well, thank you and thank you for the report. The first thing I wanted to highlight, since no one else has yet, is the mobility as a service, you know, where you say user-centric, all are designed, designed to solve the transportation, congestion, parking problems in a, you know, multimodal, subscription-based service-level solutions. What I assume you mean in all this jargon is that you're going to make it easy to get around in a simple way, right?
Right, right.
So, you know, I thought that when I was looking at the, at what constitutes our greenhouse gas emissions, I mean, transportation obviously dwarfs everything else. And obviously, if we really had a simple way to get people out of their cars, obviously, that makes the biggest difference. And I got to say, I think the trends are in that, in that direction. And I know it seems funny, but I was actually at a conference a little while back where someone showed a slide, and I don't remember the exact thing, but it was something like in 1900, there was all this, you know, all these great, all the horse and buggies were on the street. And then like five years later, there's no horse and buggies. So, and what that told me is that rapid change can actually occur. And I think the combination of self-driving cars, what we're seeing with Uber, I mean, once you have self-driving cars, it becomes fairly clear you don't need parking garages. You send your car somewhere else where you, you know, where it becomes easy. And then suddenly you don't need to own a car because really all cars are Ubers at that point, because why own one when they're self-driving and they come and pick you up and take you where you want to go? It really becomes a mass transit system. And there's all sorts of things, you see that, you know, a combination of that with smart cars where you have self-driving cars, but they can drive almost bumper-to-bumper, you double your capacity on the roads, you then make them all electric, and suddenly what you really have is a mass transit system based on the automobile. And I think we're done with that. So I think that the future could be very bright in lots of ways of all of that. So I sort of agree with you and disagree with you at the same time in that I think if we're looking out to 2040, I think we're going to see huge technical innovations. You know, one of the crazy ones that you could have is you could actually have electricity becoming so cheap through solar, and I'm watching it fall. I mean, solar, I think solar is getting more and more competitive where it's going to be cheaper than brown power in the not-too-distant future. When I saw that our avoided cost on solar is, you know, 10 cents and something, when I joined council, I don't remember what the number was, but it was something much, much higher. I think it was double that. I mean, that's just my, my recollection. I don't know if you know.
I don't, but it's probably more than double that.
And so, you know, in five years, we've seen this radical shift in where solar is. So yes, go buy as many power purchase agreements as we can. I think we need to do that. I think that's easy. Well, I'll tell you that it seems that my experience on some of this stuff has been that the low-hanging fruit gets taken early on. You actually are the one who just pointed out that you have a, we had a big drop based on going carbon neutral, and that, and those big drops are hard to necessarily come by. You can't, you know, recreate the ones you've just taken. So what you really need to get another big drop is some sort of technological breakthrough or innovation to get a big change. So I think when you see all of that, I think it's good and smart to plan aggressively for 2040. I think it's good to have a stretch goal. I think what you do in the next five years should be realistic and achievable. And, you know, you sort of hope that, that the technology comes along. I mean, I could envision a world where frankly, electricity is so cheap that we use hydrogen gas rather than natural gas for those few items that you need natural gas-type things for. And obviously, at that point, you wouldn't have any emissions based on that because you're just splitting water. So I think that we're going to be okay. I also wanted to ask you on the SCAP, it's somewhere in the report, it says you're bringing it in the spring of 2015, right? Any sense of when that is?
I'm working with city manager on dates, but we'd expect would be one of your last meetings before you go on recess.
Okay, okay. And then in terms of water, there does seem to be large opportunities in terms of, in terms of water these days. And I think that is something that's achievable. We can show tangible results in fairly short order. And so I would definitely be supportive of spending some resources on looking at that. Anyway, so thanks a lot for the report and, you know, looking forward to see what you come up with in the SCAP.
Thank you.
All right, so a number of comments here. And, excuse me, I'll go through them pretty quickly, but air travel, a comment was made that that's outside of Palo Alto, but it really isn't because we generate a lot of that air travel here. We come and go ourselves and we have people that come to our community to visit on business or pleasure, whatever. So I don't know how best you can capture that, but it's really, it really is partly Palo Alto, too. It's local as well as regional. So do you have any idea about how you'd capture that?
Capturing it precisely, no. Capturing it approximately, we're, we're starting to work with a research outfit at UC Berkeley that uses census data and economic analysis to impute estimated greenhouse gas emissions. We'll get a better estimate from that. Hybrid input-output analysis, for those of you who care to dig into that. Getting a precise measure of it is hard, just as getting a price, precise measure of transportation is hard. This is modeled estimates. That's why, you know, we called these reductions an estimate. We don't know exactly who drives how much at this point. So we're using regional models to estimate what those mixes are here. So, you know, we're not going to get precise on these numbers. I would encourage you to keep in mind that any of the greenhouse gas estimates are plus or probably plus or minus 10%, maybe plus or minus 20% accurate, about as good as anybody does. The more important question is what do we want to do about that? Do we want to, in effect, take responsibility for air travel emissions that this community generates? And if so, then we need to start thinking about, well, this is a realm where we don't have control over the technology. We do have control, you know, we do have a conversation to have in the community about the personal choices, about how we travel.
Thank you. And I was thinking, reading this too, that, you know, there for, I don't know, a couple of years or so at least, there was a, I don't remember the name of the book anymore, but there were other models, they could go on, go online even and calculate your own carbon impact, your own carbon footprint. We don't promote that or even mention it anymore. So, you know, it's not necessarily going to change things dramatically, but it can raise consciousness. And what a lot of this is about is just mindfulness. It's what a lot of it is about. Landscape and water, I agree with a number of the comments that have been made, Councilmember Burt's comments about landscape in particular, but there's something that's missing for me just by reference, and that is that there doesn't seem to be an acknowledgement that as we try to conserve water in our landscape and convert from grass to other plantings, that we need absolutely to consider habitat. And I just don't see it referenced. I don't see referenced, the Urban Force Master Plan is coming to us in not-too-distant future, I've forgotten exactly what date, but it's coming to us not too, too far. But when we're talking about conserving water in the landscape, we aren't talking about how trees though, how need water though. So we need to integrate that. We don't want to have unintended consequence because one document isn't referring to another, isn't integrating in it the essential portions of what another document contains. So habitat in our canopy needing, needing water are for sure. And habitat is not just, you know, pick a ground animal, but it's also habitat for those pollinators that we rely on for just that, pollination, it's their job. And then Gil, you're not going to be surprised at this, I've mentioned this before, I've mentioned it this morning, is our C and D, and we talk about low-hanging fruit. We've had a C and D ordinance, a construction demolition ordinance since 2004. The chart that's in your presentation, and I think there's one similar to it in the packet, shows that we are pretty flat on the last three years, even had a little bit of a spike four years ago about C and D and landfill diversion. I was told previously that in Palo Alto, that's due to construction activities. That would be consistent with what I know San Francisco's numbers are, too. Their numbers are also flat because of construction activities. And yet, and you may hear a little bit of my frustration in this, because year after year, I raise this up, Phil Bobel is so familiar with me saying these things, but yet, while we have this low-hanging fruit, we know that new materials cause, you know, impacts because of their manufacture. The last numbers that I saw, and I don't know if this is current or not, but new materials are transported seven times, all that transportation, before they reach their final destination. Where reclaimed materials can be reused either on site or on another site, requires no new manufacture and most likely more local delivery to a new site. Sites that are completely demolished require water to water down the site to keep the dust down. It's another impact of just solely demolition. If you salvage, you don't take nearly as much water because there's not nearly as much, I mean, there's very little dust created, only when you're dealing with the concrete, really, do you have that much dust creation. The, you know, it talks about the city has a robust green building program, the new green building ordinance, all of that, you know, we're not recognizing the embedded energy in existing materials and existing buildings. We don't do anything that I can see to encourage adaptive reuse of buildings. And there are a lot of occasions where it couldn't. I mean, look at our, you know, new Rin Canada Library, you know, that's a great example. Not always is that possible, of course, but I just don't see us encouraging that. And I think it is low-hanging fruit at a minimum to encourage salvage. I don't need to remind anybody here, but maybe I do, that, you know, the environmental triangle is reduce, reuse, recycle. But yet, the staff report on page, packet page 23, has a very short paragraph about zero waste, does not even mention salvage. It uses, it mentions recycling. So I guess I want an answer from Gil and from Peter. Why it is that when I stop by a construction site and ask what they've been told about salvage, the answer is, "What are you talking about? We're recycling everything here." So why is this? I am frustrated with this because it is year after year I ask this, when we have a C and D ordinance since 2004.
Well, since you invited Peter to speak to this, let me ask him to come on up, too. I think this is something we need to look at more carefully. I don't know what the, what the breakdown numbers are on that. And, and I'm not, I don't know yet how much, how much of our remaining 10% toward the 90% goal would come from C and D versus composting and the other measures we're undertaking. I agree with you, this is an important measure. I think the way that you have framed it, looking at some of the systems costs of embedded energy, the water required, the transportation demand engendered is really important. And so if, if we have programs that aren't showing up as taking effect on the job site, you know, we may have programs in place, but if people don't know about them or aren't enacting them or they're not being adequately supported, then that's something we need to take a look at.
I mean, just, just quickly, it's like, you know, Peter, like, there are two, two houses just a block away from me that were totally demolished. And I asked both of those contractors what they knew about salvage. Neither one of them knew anything about salvage. So I'm really serious in wanting to get this in place, and why isn't it in place when it is an ordinance that we have?
Well, good evening, and let me first say that is, is this on? That's a great question. It's something that is on our minds. We have a very aggressive C and D ordinance. We've seen a lot of improvement in how much material is recycled. When we looked at our C and D ordinance some, two years ago, we realized we really need to do more in the way of encouraging buildings to be reused. The issue is, it takes a lot more time and a lot more energy for contractors to do that. What we've done to incentivize that work is allow for the issuance of a demolition permit well in advance of their building permit to start the construction so that they have plenty of time to start the deconstruction process. We've talked at length about the incentives of, the tax incentives of using those, those recyclable materials. In fact, Judith Wasserman, a close contributor to the work that we've done at the Development Center, has great examples and statistics and metrics about how much money can be actually saved in some of these, quote, "older homes" that are being torn down. But again, it's an educational process. We are pushing for the community to take more time, slow down, and look at the value that's embedded from a monetary perspective as well as from a greenhouse gas perspective in these existing structures. In fact, before you tonight, we'll be bringing a green building ordinance amendment that mandates tier one and tier two construction techniques, which demolition is again embedded in that ordinance as well. So we'll continue to press that and encourage applicants to take the time to do the deconstruction and, and in every way, shape, and form, provide them the leeway and the training and, and methods to take advantage of that, so.
When it's in our ordinance, why aren't we requiring it? Why aren't we going further? And I'm a little concerned about saying that you're giving demolition permits prior to building permits because we just flipped that a few years ago for very good reasons. So it takes a little bit longer, but some of the other things we put in requirements also take longer. But we're not allowing for that, you know, some kind of like, well, okay, we'll let you start construction earlier because of those things. So it still seems like there's a real disconnect here.
Sure. One of the areas that we identified during our green building retreat was, was deconstruction. We prioritize that with the input from the Green Building Advisory Group. It is one of the things that we're going to be taking a closer look at. This year, we were mainly focused on water and energy. It is something that we can take a closer look at going into this next code cycle, for sure.
So not to hit you guys over the head, but I'm going to hit you over the head, it's 11 years, 11 years. Phil, you have some comments?
Just in defense of Peter, I think he said it, but just so that everybody is on the, so one, one thing that's going on here is we could be increasing, and I think we are, increasing our percentage of material that gets reused, recycled. And yet, the economy is just going gangbusters right now. I think that's what you were alluding to. So we've got these two offsetting effects. That's one thing that we have to realize is going on. And that's why on our overall, in fact, oh, that's the, yeah, there's our overall chart, happens to be up there. So you see that same thing happening there, is our diversion looks like it's going down a little bit. This is the overall diversion, not just the C and D diversion. But the same thing hit us here. The economy got a lot better, we had a lot more occupancy to the buildings, frankly, we got a lot more trash. And that's one factor. If I could just say one thing on the, the dust control and the use of water, that's a great point. In fact, we were just talking about it today and that we need to get more aggressive there. We probably need to just suspend the use of potable water on dust control. That's something I think I'm going to personally see, is there some roadblock? Is there some reason for not doing that? We haven't thought of any yet in the six hours, since I think it occurred to a bunch of us that we needed to do that. So they can either use recycled water, yes, they have to drive all the way to the sewage treatment plant, but life's tough. Or they can use the water from one of our pumping sites, there are two now in Palo Alto as of today, that are pumping groundwater and can be reused. They can send a truck over there if it's more convenient than our sewage treatment plant. The third thing I wanted to say in response to one of your points was the tree angle. Definitely, we're tuned into that. So what CSD is trying to do in their park-by-park analysis is look at two ways of looking at turf. One is, what does it take to keep the turf alive? And do we want to keep that particular piece of turf alive? And then secondly, what does it take to keep the trees? And then secondly, what does it take to keep the trees going? And probably, it takes a lot less to keep the trees going. Probably two waterings a month, probably we can keep the trees going. So I just wanted to point out that where the trees are in the middle of the lawn, we're not ignoring that, in fact, you'll, you'll see it in our analysis.
Thank you for that, and I hope there'll be some different news to report in the next time, so thank you for that. And I see no other council members with comments, but I do have, I think, five members of the public who'd like to speak. First speaker is Sven Thesen, to be followed by Steve Rainey. And you'll have three minutes.
Good evening, council members. Sven Thesen, Palo Alto resident, chemical engineer, owner of Project Green Home, net zero energy, all bets on, part-time consultant to the city on electric vehicles, climate activist, and loudmouth. First, the bad news, the trends. The trends are as true as your cellphone mostly works. That's the bad news. Climate change, the battle we're losing. Every year, our carbon emissions as a society go up. As such, I'd like to show one graph that I've put up as a presentation. Can I get that? And this is California emissions cumulatively for 2012. As an engineer, what I like to work on is the 80% solution. What is the biggest problem? And once that slide goes up, you'll see it's actually transportation, and worse, it's our light duty vehicles, right there, if we can make that big, please. Unfortunately, it's really hard to see, but it's 120 megatons per year of light duty vehicles. And it's all about what Greg and Pat talked about. How do we get out of our light duty vehicles? And two things, great things are happening, as Greg and Pat alluded to, which is changes in our transportation, both technology and stereotypes. I'm 50, I had a car when I was 16, I had my driver's license when I was 15, I bet you guys did too. But my nephew, who's 21, he still doesn't have his driver's license. And this is noted by all the major automobile manufacturers, that they are losing the number of people who are buying cars. We have Uber, we have Lyft, we will have self-driving cars. The problem is, we will have them in five or 10 years. And right now, we need to slow down that bus that we're all riding on into that cliff, so we can do as much as possible to solve that 80 percentile problem. It's wonderful, residential, you know, I feel really good about having this net zero energy, ultra-low, low-carbon household, but it doesn't really matter compared to how much that dark green is over there. And only a very small component of that is heavy-duty trucks, and a very, even much minuscule component is airplane rides. That's important. So we're, we're, we have a potential solution by converting our transportation, the sooner we do it, the better, to get those middle and late adopters in. So education and adoption. I challenge all of you to get into an EV as soon as possible. Next slide, please. Want to talk about water, but I also want to talk about the good news in getting out of those cars and the technology, because the total cost of ownership for those electric vehicles right now is cheaper than a conventional vehicle. Water and energy, we want to talk about economics, because that's important. There are more people employed in the solar industry in California that are employed by PG&E, SoCal Edison, and San Diego Gas and Electric. Our three major utilities in the state employ fewer people than the solar industry does now. Where has that blossomed in the last five years? Water. This is the city's water use right here for residences. Residences use roughly half the water out of Gil's report. And you can see the, oh, I lost it. Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for coming and for your passion. Steve Rainey, to be followed by Tim Gray.
Good evening, council. Let's definitely go for the moonshot. Wanted to ask if council has an opinion, want to ask if council has an opinion about adding some kind of an initiative on housing. For example, low-impact housing, micro units, taking something that can make some waves, that can really scale, where there's a lot less driving per capita in those new homes, and a lot fewer cars, and they could also have very green building design as well, so, such as the Patrick Kennedy micro units up there. And potentially, you could follow Stanford West's green housing preference to reduce commuting, kind of build that in as well. And envision somebody, say, take a parcel like 27 University, everybody bikes to Stanford for their job, and then they spend their money downtown, and they don't have much need to drive, and it's affordable by design. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Tim Gray, to be followed by Win Gersich.
Good evening, Tim Gray. I wanted to encourage us to make sure that we keep a global look at the greenhouse gas and this whole topic, because oftentimes, we, people get, get into thinking that we're going to reduce the gas here, and maybe that doesn't tie in with what happens in China or the rest of the world. But if we can take more of a global look, and for example, if each of us would just, I'm not sure what the statistics are, reduce our meat consumption by 50%, it's the equivalent of having every single resident in Palo Alto switch from a SUV to a Prius. And that would be a tremendous accomplishment, but just a little conversation with the community about other impacts besides the micro projects that we would want to showcase. And this global look, I think, is, well, I'll just leave it at that for the sake of time, but really take a bigger look at, at the issue, and let's not get into something that we do right here to produce pride in being green, but be real, for example, look at the cost of batteries in, in electric cars. So let's go back to the manufacturing of the savings, as, as well as what happens right here in Palo Alto.
Thank you. Win Gersich, to be followed by Brett Anderson.
Hi, I was at the Earth Day Festival in San Francisco on 22nd admission on Saturday, and I was protesting the chemtrails. And there's going to be a huge global march this Saturday on it, and this is something, when you're talking about what's happening with this climate change, yeah, we could have more water. Stanford has a grant with NASA to spray those chemtrails, which is geoengineering the weather. And if you look up on YouTube, they have a video called Geoengineering Lawsuit, and everybody should be looking this up to see what we can do to stop this drought, because if they stop geoengineering the weather, then we would have more water. And secondly, there's more legislation that needs to be passed, because in naturalnews.com, on April 18th, US government allows powerful corporations to sell California's water with no permits and no reporting during the drought. We could save water right there if we go after this and make sure that our government doesn't do this, because Nestle's being sued right now, because their permits have not been renewed, and they're private, they're privatized of the water and bottled water, they're selling it out. So while we're sitting there turning to turn our water to toilet to tap, you know, we have these corporations that are selling bottled water elsewhere and not to us. That's one way we can get rid of it, is that if everybody got involved in this. Secondly, is the fact is, you're talking about dust. You can put tarps down when you do construction and roll it up like carpet, and that'll keep some of it down where you don't need to use water. And Paul Gardner from East Palo Alto, he used to have a, it was a company that did this stuff when they took the things.
Deconstruction.
What?
Deconstruction, I think is what you're looking for.
Well, the demolition, that's what he would do. And he's now moved to Samhain, but if you hire him, then the East Palo Alto people will get the jobs, because they work for him. Another thing too, is that you're talking about cars. What's going to happen when all these cars that have batteries get in wrecks? Where, where's the dump for all the battery acid, you know, that's going to be coming out of this? I mean, you know, here you're talking about carbon credits and all this stuff, where's going to be the waste dump for that? I can't imagine if a Tesla car gets in an accident and it can't be repaired, that we're going to create more of a problem. But most of all, when you're turning toilet to tap, and you have this, you know, you're doing this thing with the, taking your sewage sludge and turning it into mulch, you're going to have copper, you've got carp in it, carper, copper in it, and you were taking it to Kettleman City. So when you recycle the toilet water, you're going to have copper in your recycled toilet water. And I'm going to put this on public record, you can all check it out, because copper causes gastrointestinal distress, it causes Alzheimer's, it causes Parkinson's, and the fact is, it causes kidney damage. And when you're turning to toilet water, even though you think it's cheaper, Dr. Win Parker's been on the radio for the last eight years, and he's talking about recycled toilet water. He did DNA research at Stanford, and he wrote chloramine causes collateral health damage. And you might think this is a cheap outlook to recycle the toilet water, but you can't get all the stuff out, and when you use these toxic poisons, this is a Swan report done on chlorine, how it sterilizes people and causes miscarriages. This is the other one, saying that fluoride is your next contraceptive. So I'm going to put this on here, and you can see what the water and recycled toilet water will do. It'll increase cancer death rates.
Brett Anderson, to be followed by Stephanie Munoz.
I'm Brett, Palo Alto resident, and member of the Green Ribbon Task Force from way back, as well as Carbon Free Palo Alto. So I wanted to mention two things in terms of just connection with this whole effort. One would be to look at the potential effects of telepresence on transportation and greenhouse gases, and the connection of that to the city's, say, new vision for utilities, bringing in perhaps broadband communications into that, having that get funded in part by telepresence services. And by telepresence, it's not just business meetings and reducing carbon at the corporate level, but also dispensing medical services, not having to do those errands that you would normally do for service providers that can be just in the same town, across town, for example, my visits from South Palo Alto to Pamp for dermatology check, whatever it is that can be done via telepresence these days. So there's a connection there that I think we should look at in terms of how fast we could eliminate some of those trips. The other area would be to look at the cooperation regionally, and not pass up, in a sense, opportunities with organizations that are making that effort to provide alternatives to car transportation, namely, here I'm talking about Bus Rapid Transit, where we have a regional organization that is looking to invest substantial amounts to improve the alternative infrastructure, including bicycling and pedestrian. And we should, I think, look more carefully as a city, even though we have traffic models that show it might provide some additional traffic for car transportation, but let's make an effort to work communally with these other cities to build these infrastructure components that allow us to make the transition away from car culture, whether the car's electric or gas, doesn't matter if you're still energizing those cars through fossil fuels, or potentially creating the traffic, the health, the safety, and the congestion issues. So I would just urge council to take the default green approach when we're dealing with these external entities too, that have good ideas and projects to, to invest in.
Thank you, and thank you for coming. Stephanie Munoz, to be followed by our final speaker, Mike Francois.
Good evening, council members. Some 50 years ago, after the Second World War, our country made a huge investment in education and in home building to honor the, the veterans of that war. And it was so well-received that ever since, we've been on a growth spiral, up, up, up. And it's almost been like a religion, that that was the most important thing, was to have growth and lots of jobs, lots of good jobs, and lots of everything, and get rid of the old one and buy a new one. Even 50 years ago, Santa Clara County was saying to us, one of the problems with low-income housing is the people are just staying in their houses, and they're not buying new houses and leaving the old ones for lower-income people to use. Oh, gee whiz, I didn't know. Well, these past few weeks, we've seen a little bit of a change in outlook. Instead of saying, oh, you know, let's get rid of those poor people, oh, let's get rid of those old buildings, build new buildings, get rich, new people, people are saying, wait a minute, we don't want to get rid of those poor people. We don't want to get rid of those old buildings. They're actually useful. And why can't we have new buildings also? Why can't we use the old buildings for something else? But we're pretty much stuck in a throwaway mindset. It's been a month since I looked at the gym, back at the Palo Alto High School, and realized that there was no reason why it had to be demolished, none. I, I had thought, well, it was sort of in the middle of a cluster of buildings, and they wanted to put a new one in. It's not, it's out there. Anyway, I would like to suggest that you spend some time, a little bit of time thinking about what will happen if we have depression and deflation. Some of this stuff will be all to the good. A lot of solar will help, because we won't have to spend so much on, on, on energy. So that would be good. It would be good if right now, in addition to the work on new construction and new requirements, you help people do something with their old houses to make them energy efficient and water efficient. I have a tenant, and I said, you know, you could have maybe put an extra shower if we took out the tub, and she said, oh, I really like the tub. Well, nobody is even thinking about some kind of a pump where that tub water could go water the apricot trees. Nobody's even looking at it. But you guys should, you're really, it would be a big help to everybody, a big savings. Thanks so much. Good night.
And our final speaker on this topic is Mike Francois.
Good evening, city council, Mike Francois, your next door neighbor from East Palo Alto. Just a couple of comments here. This has to do with recycled water, the first one. It says infants below the age of six months who drink water contaminated, containing nitrates in the excess of MCL would come seriously ill, and if untreated, may die. Symptoms include shortness of breath and Blue Baby Syndrome, erosion of natural deposits, discharge from refineries and factories, runoff from landfills and cork lands, runoff from fertilizer use, leaching from septic tanks, sewage, erosion of natural deposits. These is from nitrate and nitrogen, which is basically ammonia. Ammonia is put in water, as we know, to kill the smell and kill the germs, we know that. So these are things you should consider. Also, you're talking about vehicle transportation. Tata Motors last year, you know, out of India, and India, as we know, went further than the United States has ever been in space, they've actually gone to Mars. The United States should be monitoring them, because their technology is way out there. But Tata Motors has developed a vehicle that runs on air. You know, people laugh at that. They also laughed at, you know, running off of cooking oil for a while there, and back at KFC, you know, they laughed at that, but it came to be. Also, Win Parker, RBN, Republican Broadcasting Network, who's a 15-year student at Stanford, who studies science and law, comes on the radio every Sunday morning from 8:00 to 11:00 a.m. He talks about all this stuff you are talking about. He talks about where it's going, who's developing it, who's ahead of it, and why they aren't developing, and who is stopping it. So if any of you are interested, try one Sunday morning, and you can call in live and tell them who you are, or even tell them who you are. You can ask them a question of this, about these things, and he will tell you his version, and it may line up with yours. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you to staff, with the one notable exception. You're doing a great job, leading us well, you're covering a lot of bases, and I really appreciate all your effort in so many regards. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Holman.
So we now go to agenda changes, additions and deletions. Seeing none, and we have none, we'll go then to city manager comments. Mr. Keen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Number of items to report on. First of all, the California Avenue streetscape is nearing the finish line, and construction crews will be putting the finishing touches on items such as the lighting and landscaping over the next week. No grass landscaping, of course. The new fountain on the plaza that will be installed tomorrow, and mark your calendars Thursday, May 7th at 2:30 p.m. for a celebration with the local merchants, where the city will officially commemorate and cut the ribbon on California Avenue. Did want to share that Palo Alto local Matt Schlegel, who you met a few weeks ago, successfully completed the Casuma Gara Marathon in our sister city of Chichurro over the weekend. Reports suggest he had a wonderful time. I don't know if that meant during the marathon or after the marathon. And he reported his time of 4:25, was pretty close to his goal. And he reported his time of 4:25, was pretty close to his goal of 10-minute mile. So we look forward to hearing from him and seeing photos on his return to Palo Alto. I again wanted to just go into a little more detail than we were talking about when we were talking about water. Again, on March 17th, the State Water Resources Control Board adopted emergency drought regulations that limit landscape irrigation with potable water. Our recommendations on how to enforce these rules is scheduled for the May 11th council meeting. Our city's been actively collaborating with other water agencies and cities in the Bay Area to implement two-day-a-week per irrigation limit with even addresses watering on Tuesdays and Fridays, and those with odd addresses on Mondays and Thursdays will be bringing this to council for formal action. As I mentioned earlier, on top of the March 17th emergency drought regulations, Governor Brown declared a statewide mandatory 25-use reduction, and our reduction target has been increased from 20% to 24% from the 2013 usage levels. The state board is expected to act on those new emergency water use regulations by May 6th, and the mandatory reduction targets would become effective on June 1st. As you know, we already have water use regulations in place that restrict water use in some uses of clean drinking water and fountains, irrigation during the day, washing vehicles, et cetera. The city will continue to enforce these regulations in addition to new actions. As I mentioned earlier, we, as a community, reduced our water use by 16% from 2013 levels last year, and city facilities reduced water use by 27%. Up-to-date information can be found at thecityofpaloalto.org/water. I know in this environment, the council and staff is hearing from a lot of our citizens who are concerned about this issue with different questions and issues, questions recently of de-watering on new construction sites, landscaping, leaking systems, et cetera. We'll be developing some FAQs and some information. We'll put those both on the website, and we'll share them with the council so that there's a better understanding about these problems or issues and the city's response to them. So I have that out shortly. I think Phil has gone, but the city has released a draft environmental impact report for the potential project to expand our recycled water system. Councilmember Burt, amongst others, mentioned it during the discussions earlier. This is a project that would deliver recycled water produced by a regional water quality control plan to parks and commercial customers in and near the Stanford Research Park. And so public comments on the EIR, draft EIR, will be accepted until June 4th, and there will be public meetings scheduled from May 19th and 21st, and more information will be posted on the city's website. And did want to share that at the Dobie Creek Undercrossing, city crews have completed the cleanup and fence installation of the Benjamin Lefkowitz Bicycle Pedestrian Undercrossing, and the gates reopened last week. And as you may be aware, they typically remain open until October 15th and close upon the arrival of the first significant storm. Work at the Palo Alto Airport started last week to make needed repairs on the runway and adjacent taxiways, and the first of three phases was completed with rubber and marking removal, cracked ceiling and runway pavement repairs. And Phase 2 involves micro-surfacing and painting pavement markings during two-day, all-day closures of the runway and taxiways tomorrow and Wednesday. So the improvements that we expected to begin seeing with the city's takeover of the airport is taking place. And I did want to point out, I think, to the council that at your desk, you've got a copy of the fiscal year 2016-25 general long-range financial forecast, and we'll be having that on your agenda for next Wednesday. We'll be presenting you the fiscal operating budget and capital budgets that are informed very much by that forecast. I also did want to share with the council as a whole, that I know at least Mayor Holman was able to attend an important regional event here in the Bay Area this past weekend, which really was a commemoration of the 100th anniversary of the Armenian genocide, and participation from a number of different organizations on that particular occasion. So we want to thank the mayor for attendance there. And I had two other things real quick. Are you still here? I know the council has had the opportunity individually to meet Ed Chikada, who has been, however, appointed as an interim Assistant City Manager, but I thought I would formally introduce him to the council, ask Ed to just come up for a minute and say howdy to the council as a whole. In typical Palo Alto fashion, I brought him on and then left for a conference for a week. So just threw him into the pool, which is the way things work here. Ed?
Well, thank you, Jim. Just again, want to express my appreciation to be a part of this team. I have, in the approaching two weeks, been on board getting up to speed on issues. I think Jim's description of jump in and start swimming and try to keep up with the stream is a good, accurate one. Just with this evening's discussion as a good example, while the issues may be familiar across the valley that cities are grappling with, City of Palo Alto's certainly ambition, as well as ability to act, is extraordinary. And so I look forward to working with you, support of the city manager, and the organization advancing your priorities.
So howdy, Ed.
Howdy.
And then lastly, I, obviously, this past weekend, we had a magical event out at the Mitchell Park area with the opening of the, formal opening of the Mitchell Park Bridge. And I think the mayor, I would turn it over to you since I think you have some important accoutrements and comments to make.
Well, it was, thank you, City Manager. It was a great event. It's a great playground. If you haven't been, I encourage anyone, any age, any capability to visit. It was truly a magical day. There were hundreds of people there. And Councilmember Niss, Councilmember Burt, and Councilmember Philsith were there as well. Rob DeGusso, I do not see here right now, but he was there, and he and I and Councilmember Burt accepted the key to the magical bridge. Councilmember Burt, because when he was mayor, that's when this project first came to light. On the back of the key, it says, "Only with each inclusive space will real magic in our town take place." And it is indeed a magical place. There's been some quotes and articles, and just if you were there and talking with people, you could see, you know, mothers that were able to visit a playground with their children for the first time ever, children who were siblings or be able to play with each other for the first time. It just really was a remarkable, remarkable day. And I think, you know, very possibly it has a broader impact than ever they had even imagined because of its inclusive perspective. So congratulations to Jill Asher and Alinka Villarreal, especially on just really a tremendous outcome and their insight also in including Royston, who's the designer, actually, of Mitchell Park originally, and Royston is the architect who designed Magical Playground, Magical Bridge Playground. So great success. City Manager, your comments stimulated a couple of questions by colleagues, Councilmember Scharf and Councilmember Philsith.
Thank you. I just wanted to comment on the California Avenue things and ask you. First of all, when do we anticipate it being finished?
The report I have from the staff is sometime over the next two weeks, I think. The final sort of landscaping and some of the other, I mean, some of the furniture and that sort of thing will be done.
Then I want to say, I saw the LED light there. I actually think it looks great.
Oh, good.
And those bollards look fantastic, you know, the little rock bollards. So I think it's shaping up nicely. And then the one thing I did notice, and I figure we're going to fix it, but in case we don't, it slips through the cracks, is that I've noticed that the newspaper racks are now often in the middle of the sidewalk, because we've extended the sidewalks, and they need to be moved out. And I just figured, it could be something that slips through, so I thought maybe we could just, you know, look at that.
Yes, thank you for pointing that out.
Councilmember Philsith.
Okay, thanks very much. And I'm going to try to be brief here because I'm going to go off the ranch for a minute. But regarding the state, the state water mandates, right, which discussed here, you know, I have really complicated feelings about this. Very clearly, we're going to need to take these kinds of steps, and a little later this evening, we're going to discuss green building codes and so forth. But everybody in this, everybody in the state knows that municipal residential water consumption is a tiny fraction of the water used in the state. 80% of it is agricultural, of which one or two, that's 1% or 2% of the state GDP, and a lot of that's exported and so forth. The Mercury News this morning that said, I read, that the state almond crop, of which 70% is exported overseas, consumes more annual water than all private indoor water use, such as showers and cooking and toilets and so forth, that we're discussing in our codes and so forth here. So, you know, the governor's mandates don't really touch this 80%. And so they're not really addressing much of the problem. I mean, we're going to take a chunk out of the 20%, but it's not going to make much difference. It also sends a terrible message, so I'm going to exaggerate a lot here. This is going to be absolutely as pejorative as possible, but basically it suggests that every drop of water that we save is essentially a corporate subsidy to somebody growing commercial cash crops. So by itself, the governor's mandate would be given.
Councilmember Philsith.
I'm going to close in a second here. It's terrible policy and it's worse PR. I assume Sacramento is anticipating cities are going to scream, so we should scream and stomp our feet, okay? We should push back on this because until Sacramento takes the next step, we're going to take these measures, but they're just not going to make a huge difference. Thanks.
Thank, it is. So we go now to concluding City Manager comments. Okay. All right, then we go now to oral communications. We have six cards. Our first speaker is Lynn Gorsuch to be followed by Stephanie Munoz.
Last week I was in Millbury when they were talking about the Armenian Holocaust, and I thought it was to throw everybody off of what was happening right here. We're having our own Holocaust. When our government has the right to put fluoridation and chloramine in our drinking water, and they know it increases cancer death rates, and what I put on your public record tonight was the, that used to be on the San Francisco PUC, the EPA Safe Drinking Water Studies, and Ira Rushkin, way back when, when they started adding the ammonia to the drinking water, knowing it was going to increase cancer death rates, they pulled it off, and they told everybody that, to his surprise, there was no state and federal studies done on chloramine. But yet, Lynn Parker had the federal studies that was given to him by Pat Martell when she was the head of the San Francisco PUC in 2003, and he wrote chloramine causes collateral health damage. So I do encourage you to listen to his show because he's talking about the recycled toilet water, and for the last 10 years, we're on the death threat right now. This is going to kill a lot more people. But when you drink recycled toilet water, you drink it and you're drinking someone else's medicines and their diseases? Think about this. One-third of the population's already sterile, and one-third of the population is also on antidepressants, and most of the antidepressants have fluoride in it. And you know Prozac is 97% fluoride? So listen to this. This is from Behold a Pale Horse, page 225. Using drugs and hypnotic, hypnosis on mental patients is called a process called Orion. The CIN incalcated these desires in people to open fire on school yards, thus inflaming the anti-gun lobbying. This plan was well underway, so far working perfectly, that the middle class is begging the government to do away with the Second Amendment. The shooters were all ex-mental patients, were currently mental patients who were all on the drug Prozac. This drug, when taken with certain doses, increases serotonin levels in patients, causing extreme violence, and coupled with hypnotic suggestion through electromagnetic brain implant or microwave or EFL intrusion, you get a mass murder, ending up in every case with suicide of the perpetrator. So this has been going on. This book was written in 1991. Now, you know that all this is happening, and now we have Columbine locks on the schools, we have recycled toilet water, and you're drinking everybody else's medicine while you're continuing to add fluoride to the water. Now, also think about this, when it's mellow, let it yellow, that ammonia in the drinking water is also going to be full of more ammonia and nitrogen, right? So, and then you don't have the extra water to make it diluted when you recycle it. So, and we know it causes Blue Baby Syndrome. Mike just read that to you, and you also have the paper that I put on public record. But I do encourage you to listen to Lynn Parker. He can tell you more about it. And one other thing, too, is Abby Martin explains why fluoride is poison. This is on YouTube. She actually shows you in Earth Day that we're drinking the air pollution from the fertilizer industry in China to reduce cavities. And if people knew that, they would be ticked off. And if you're drinking this with lead and arsenic in it, who wants to give lead and arsenic to their children? And we know that the Harvard studies, when it lowers children's IQs, which you have the Harvard studies I put on public record, why isn't anybody trying to stop this?
Stephanie Munoz to be followed by Mike Francois.
Good evening again, council members. I've looked, with some bemusement, at the movement to have a higher minimum wage at the very same time when we're doing a large number of things to harm poor workers, like telling them they can't sleep in their cars and not having any kind of shelter for them and making the price of homes too much for them. It seems to me that before we raise the minimum wage, we should look very carefully. We should have that, that assessment of the businesses that's definitely going to come in order to, in order to have a business license. And we should ask the workers, as well as the employers, about the effects of the, of the minimum wage on their job and their business. The, and we don't have to go by scare stories from Oakland, but we should realize that all of the upward trend of the economy and the houses and the businesses and the money is not going to be mitigated by taking a piece out of Baskin and Robbins in your local taqueria. So I would say, instead, what the cities of this country should do is stand up on their hind legs and say to the government, "We want single payer." That is, we want the social security money to go into the health insurance instead of sending that health insurance money to the, to the investment companies, to the insurance investment companies, to put more money in the economy. The people are really suffering from not having the health insurance that they have paid for with their taxes. And I think that this is a good time to look at it because we're looking at the difficulties of being poor workers. That's what's driving the call for a greater minimum wage, and those difficulties are real. I would like to suggest to you that their suffering would be greatly mitigated if we had national health insurance, so that all the money that the workers are putting and the employers are putting into health would go into health, and it would be a safety net for everybody in the country. This, this is probably the best time to look at it, when we're looking at the enormous inequalities in wealth and in salaries and the enormous suffering of the poor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Mike Francois to be followed by Richard Yen.
Okay, I must speak on a subject that, that came to my attention last week. It was on Assembly Bill 277. That was last week. It came to news, people were up in Sacramento protesting, what you call it, vaccinations, mandatory vaccinations, which Governor Brown signed, you know, but he's not forcing people religious belief, but he did sign it, you know? But he also approved fracking also, so something's wrong with him. It was stopped in April 15th after Robert F. Kennedy Jr. spoke in Sacramento, to Sacramento, to the public. Stay aware because it will be brought back like it was, like, like, like Assembly, like the biochemical creation bill. That, if you remember that, that was Assembly Bill 277. That, if you remember that, that was Assembly Bill Two, Two Eight Three that came in 2011, where they wanted to melt down bodies in a liquid form and pour it down the drain. It came to the Assembly, they turned it down, they listened, they brought it back again, and they turned it down twice in 2011, they turned it down. You have to pay attention. They wanted to cremate dead bodies into a liquid form and pour it down the drain, like they do in Florida and some of the other eastern and western and southern states. And, point in brown, it was stopped in 2011, like I said, twice. And stopping it, and stopping it again, the vaccinations will sneak in again. Stay diligent, you know, pay attention. Nobody, no one person or no group of people have a right to tell you how to vaccinate your children or your cousins or your family. A lot of you here that sit right up there, that look and laugh and so forth and whisper, you weren't vaccinated with all this. Who says that vaccinations work? I think the only people who need vaccinations are the people who come here illegally, who are allowed to stay, who carry diseases. That should be mandatory, not mandatory, driver's licenses. You get, you, they should take vaccinations, you know, because they are bringing a lot of diseases to the schools. And also, Win Parker, that Win talks about, that's a San Mateo County resident, like I said, from eight to eleven, Sunday mornings. He will talk about vaccinations if you ask. He will tell you about them. Stanford taught him well. You know, he wants one, the smartest man in the United States and back in the seventies, you know, the know-it-all guy. What is it called, Win?
Questions.
The question and answer man. He answered questions in law and medicine. He passed, he won. He has the answers, some answers. And I think if you just listen to him one time on Sunday and just hear him out, eight to eleven, RBN Live on your computer, look him up, Parker Pathways. Thank you. Oh, last thing, I got a few more seconds?
You have three seconds left.
Oh, three seconds, oh.
There you go.
All right, thank you.
So Richard Yan, to be followed by Alex Holsinger.
Hello, council. My name is Richard Yan, and I am a participant of the iMedicine Club at Gunn. We have researched extensively on the problems of TCE, trichlorethylene, which is a carcinogen that has permeated through a lot of our groundwater supplies. And we believe it is the entire community's responsibility to try and resolve this problem. So TCE, it's a carcinogen that was used extensively in Palo Alto from the nineteen sixties to nineteen eighties as an industrial solvent. It was frequently spilled into the groundwater where it still remains today. This very groundwater could be a potential source of drinking water if the Californian drought continues. TCE is very harmful, even in small concentrations. The accepted amount is five parts per billion, although some experts believe that lower doses can cause cancer. According to Dr. Samuel Goldman of the Parkinson's Institute, research shows that a significant link between Parkinson's disease and also TCE. So the most infamous TCE plume in Palo Alto is the California Olive Emerson, COE plume, located at the HP Superfund site. It is very large and contains two HP facilities and also a medical facility as well. It contains the HP facility located at Six Two Zero to Six Four Zero Page Mill Road and a former Varian Medical Systems incorporation facility at Six Oh One California Avenue. It also contains the former HP facility at Three Nine Five Page Mill Road. It is only fifteen feet underground, so this can cause cancer to a lot of people who are living above. Extends from Alma and Oregon Expressway to the HP headquarters and encompasses part of Stanford Palo Alto Community playing fields. It sits directly, finally, it sits directly above the Santa Clara groundwater basin, and this could again be used as a source of drinking water as the Californian drought continues. Thank you.
And thank you. Alex Holsinger, to be followed by Brent Han.
I'm also part of the investigative medicine club at Gunn High School. As, as Richard mentioned, there are a number of spills of chemicals, and TCE isn't just the, isn't the only toxic chemical. There are also TC's cousins, cousins, such as tetra-chlorethylene or Perk and trichlorethane, such as known as TCA. Using an online map provided by the company Teradex, the following spills have been mapped. Like Richard mentioned, the Farchild Superconductor Site, which is actually right next to our high school, we can see it from where we do our club, the site affected. The spill contains the following chemicals: tetra-chlorethylene, xylanes, trichlorethane, TCA, and the list goes on. Another confirmed spill is the Palo Alto landfill. It's located east of Highway One Oh One, and it encompasses part of the Baylands. Spill is found by the outer ring of monitoring well network. Its chemicals are unnamed, but they are certainly harmful and very shallow in the groundwater. These chemicals are, may cause cancer and birth defects. Two other sites on Middlefield Road are at Colorado Avenue, a small site, but only seven point seven feet under the ground. The plume hazards are lung disease and others. The known chemicals include gasoline. Another is at Talway, nine point one feet underground and contains the same. And five plumes exist along East Charleston Boulevard and Fabian Way, located directly underneath the condo housing complex, an industrial center and a Costco shopping center. And they are located at a depth of six point five to nine point one feet under the ground. And the health hazards include cancer, developmental disabilities, lung disease, and various other diseases from the aforementioned chemicals, as well as volatile organic compounds. Additional plumes exist under El Camino Way, near the foothills in the hills and under Town and Country Village. Thank you.
Thank you. And Brent Han.
Hi. So I'm also part of the, whoops. There you go. So I'm also part of the Gunn iMed Club, and we feel that one of the main dangers is that even though we've known that in the future this could contain our drinking water from the droughts, at the current, at the current time, this groundwater could accumulate in underground structures such as garages. And when they evaporate, they release these toxins to the air, so we breathe it in. And so these release toxins, as aforementioned before, they can cause many diseases such as cancer, Parkinson's, and even birth defects. Since 1993, Mountain View ordinances have required newly constructed buildings to have vapor barriers, and these vapor barriers prevent TCE gas from entering, from entering living spaces. However, Palo Alto does not have any official law that holds construction to the same level of building code, which endangers the lives of our residents. In addition, residential buildings built over these contaminated sites in Mountain View are not allowed to have underground parking for basements. Yet in Palo Alto, underground garages are common in contaminated areas, and there are no restrictions to prevent this from happening. And we feel this is something that must be changed. The EPA has aggressively cleaned up much of the contamination across One Oh One Freeway from Moffett Field, often using new methods such as bio remediation. Nothing of the sort has happened in Palo Alto. Palo Alto also uses an outdated twenty-year-old plumb tree system. According to an associate from the EPA and the US Navy, TCE will take one hundred years or century to fully remove using this treatment. The system has also caused TCE buildup in some wells. As citizens of Palo Alto, we are very concerned about the safety of our city and our loved ones. We understand that the city's officials are doing everything they can to ensure that the situation is remedied, and it is our hope that the city of Palo Alto will consider the following measures to help counter the problems of TCE and other groundwater contaminants. A, require indoor sampling around TCE hotspots. Buildings with TCE levels above the accepted safety level of five parts per billion must be treated and have vapor barriers installed. B, require new buildings to have proper vapor barriers to prevent soil gas from entering buildings. And C, prohibit underground garages for all new construction over contaminated sites. Thank you for taking the time to listen to our presentation.
Thank you. And before you leave the podium, Brent, before you leave the podium, you have some other people with you that it look like might be your colleagues in this endeavor?
Yes, they're all part of our club.
So would you care to introduce them all?
Sure. So we have Richard and Alex, who spoke.
You have to stay at the microphones so we can hear their names.
We have Richard and Alex, who spoke before me. We have Zach Stewart and Junior. We have, we have Zach Holsinger, he's a sophomore, and Alex's twin. We also have Jay, Jay Lee and David Chen. They're both sophomores like me.
Well, thank you all very much for coming. And I believe you sent your comments to all of the councilmembers, I do believe.
Yes, I do.
And if you come to the rail, each of you, if you come to the rail and see the city clerk, he has something for each of you.
Okay, thank you.
And then our final speaker under oral communications is Bob Winslow.
My name's Bob Winslow, and perhaps I was a tiny instigator in what we enjoyed tonight, but I think that the high school students are showing what it's like to be civically engaged and equally applying, applying science. I'm the CEO of Teradex, and what we've been working on for about ten years is to improve the mapping of these groundwater plumes. And one of the thing, I wanted to just make a couple of comments. Number one, I actually think that the students in their research were right on that we actually can look to what the city of Mountain View has been doing and study their ordinances. And another thing that the city of Mountain View does that I think is worthy is that they've worked to have their planning department be more informed of the occurrence and having accurate maps of where the groundwater plumes are. And I think that this is something that I've been working with staff, but I think that better planning decisions can be made if we have better mapping. One of the challenges we have in the space is that the responsible parties are not obligated to turn in maps that actually local government can use. And so I've been working a little bit at the state level to ask that there be uniform mapping obligated on RP's when they actually turn in maps, so that the local government can have a unified map that then they can make informed discretionary decisions. Finally, another initiative that we've been working on is more collaboration between local government, our different cities, Palo Alto, Mountain View, Santa Clara County Environmental Health, and that the environmental health can provide a resource to the discretionary planners so that they can make informed decisions about land use, because not every discretionary planner can be informed and smart as to these environmental hazards. And equally, we've watched Santa Clara Valley Water District come into this because they've been starting to recognize that the northern part of the county, even though we view the shallow groundwater as not being a resource, is ultimately going to need to be looked at this way. So again, I wanted to reinforce what the students brought forward today. I wanted to just elaborate on it for a moment because I actually think they've hit upon a vital and important topic in our city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for coming, and thank you for being a mentor to these young people. Thank you again for your work. Thank you for coming and for providing this information to us. It's much appreciated. So with that, we will go to approval of minutes, councilmembers.
So move.
So we have a motion by Vice Mayor Schmidt, with a second by Councilmember Walbach, to approve the minutes. Vote on the board, please.
It's a rack of time. It's ten o'clock. It's ten o'clock.
What's that?
With that, then, we move to, oh, I'm sorry, that passed unanimously.
Got ahead of myself there. So now we move to the consent calendar, and there was a, a communication that places regarding item, item number five. So looking for a motion for consent calendar.
Second. I'll second.
I didn't hear the first. Councilmember Walbach moved approval, second by Councilmember DeBois. Is that why your light was on, Councilmember DeBois?
Uh, it's right above.
Okay. Seeing no other lights, then, we'll vote on the board, please. And that also passes unanimously. So with that, then, we move to our action items. Item number ten is a public hearing, adoption of ordinances, amending chapters sixteen fourteen, sixteen seventeen, and sixteen eighteen to adopt local amendments to the California Green Building Code and the California Energy Code. Does staff have a presentation? Welcome back, Peter.
Thank you very much, and yes, we'd be pleased to present. Well, good evening, and thank you again, welcoming us back to the council. We were at Policy and Services, and we will go through this presentation again with some modifications, but, but first, let me start with some acknowledges quickly. First, let me first thank you to the D.CAG, who has been instrumental in the efforts that we've undertaken over the last few years. The Green Building Advisory Group members, such as Sven Thesen, were instrumental in meeting and conferring and talking about prioritizing all the measures that we're talking about today and the work that's gone forward since then. Melanie Jacobson, to my right, works closely with us on our green building communication, our website, our outreach, connecting directly with customers, interpreting the code, and being a local expert, if you will, on all things green building and energy, and introducing us to the leaders in the industry relative to energy and green building. To her right is Farhad, Farmund from TRC. He has been our consultant, working on the cost effectiveness study, as well as providing some expertise in the area of energy efficiency. He also has been, his firm has been working collaboratively and closely with the California Energy Commission as they roll out the newest standards, which will be taking effect in a year and a half. So we're ahead of that tidal wave, as I like to say, but it's closely nipping at our heels. So with that, I also wanted to thank Gil Friend, who's been a collaboration partner in this effort, very much involved in our efforts relative to the Green Building Advisory Group, our retreat that we had in August of last year, as well as a good friend to help bounce ideas off of. We've worked closely with PCNE Utilities, Public Works, in the formation of this green building and energy code, reach code, and I would be remiss not to thank them for their efforts as well. So with that, let me direct your attention to the PowerPoint. If I can get that. Perfect. That's fine, too. Before you is the recommended motion. Sometimes it's helpful to have it, and it'll be at the end of the PowerPoint as well. So first, let me just quickly go over an outline of what we will cover today. The scope of the Green Building and Energy Code ordinance, we'll explain what, what are the two ordinances that we're asking the council to make findings and provide a motion on. We'll go through the background of the green building and energy policies here in Palo Alto. We'll quickly go over our leadership awards in sustainability. We'll talk about a timeline relative to green building and net zero energy as it relates to the state. We'll quickly go over our Energy Reach Code ordinance proposal with the changes, which at that point, I'll hand it off to Melanie Jacobson, and she'll review that, as well as our Green Building Code ordinance proposed changes, which also, as you should know, reflect the changes recommended by the Policy and Services since then. We've been busy and hard at work, meeting again with the Green Building Advisory Group, those members that had submitted comments. We reached across and collaborated with them again, met with the Green Building Advisory Group two times since the time we met with Policy and Services, and incorporated those findings and recommendations into the work that you have before you tonight. And then finally, we'll go over quickly the future policy priorities as we move into quick, a quick turnaround from this meeting and revisit our Green Building and Energy Code yet again in preparation for when this next code cycle comes back around practically a year from this June. So with that, let's quickly go over the Green Building Ordinance versus the Energy Code. There's two ordinances, there are separate chapters of the building code. The first is the Green Building Ordinance, which covers site design, water efficiency, materials, et cetera. And second, and apart from that, is the Energy Code. It's a separate part of the building code, Part Six, and it covers energy efficiency and energy efficiency only. Unlike the Green Building Code, we need to make findings in order to enforce the reach code, as we refer to it. You'll hear that being used, that terminology being used when we're exceeding the minimum base code. And to, in order to enforce a reach code, you need to do a cost effectiveness study and file such study with the California Energy Commission, which is what we've done with the help of TRC. So with that, the quick background, the history of the Green Building and Energy Ordinance takes us back to 2008, when the state offered its green building code as optional. We, in fact, took that upon ourselves, being the innovative city that we are, and enforced it. it. Since then, we continue to raise the bar, doing energy reach codes, green building amendments, modifications to that code, making local amendments to that, that body of work, and enforcing it more rigorous every year and every code cycle. And mid-code cycle, as you'll notice, which is before you today, yet again, another revision to the green building and energy code. So we don't shy away from stretching ourselves to reach, to ensure that our green building stock, both existing as well as new, not only meets but exceeds both state and national standards. The Green Building Advisory Group, we refer to as the G-Bag, has been meeting for over a year, vetting the efforts that are before you tonight. We've been talking about green building initiatives, we've been talking about energy code updates, leaving no stone unturned on where we might improve in the area of green building, water efficiency, deconstruction, energy efficiency, et cetera. We've been having monthly meetings literally for over a year, talking in detail about all these different topics, and there is quite a few, and it's difficult to attain in one meeting once a month. So in mid-part of last year, we decided to have a retreat. We went to, we went to a conference room in City Hall and met for an entire day, had multiple facilitators, as well as a visual facilitator to help discuss the body of work that we had before us, prioritize them, and identify where the city fell in a leadership scale that we created ourselves, and polled the group of members, stakeholders that were there, which led to the work that is before you tonight. That day-long retreat again was in August of last year, and we've been hard at work doing the cost effectiveness study and other ordinance measures to get before you tonight. Continuing on that background, let's see, we've done, since the Green Building Advisory Group, we've met two times. Since we met with Policy and Services back on the 10th of March, we made two minor adjustments based on the recommendations that your committee provided us, which included some added language in terms of infeasibility. In the event that a contractor cannot meet the letter of the law, we have developed a system that we've worked through the city attorney's office, how they might meet the intent of the Green Building and Energy Efficiency Code if and when it is infeasible. And we've developed that criteria inside the, inside the ordinance. And finally, based on the recommendations of Policy and Services, we clarified all the Tier One and Tier Two local amendments. The green building code is a standard edition, then a Tier One and a Tier Two. And the Tier One and Tier Two were reviewed item by item to ensure there weren't any internal conflicts, as well as weren't any conflicts with our existing green building enforcement as we hold today. Staff has drafted before you tonight and in your packet the report, as well as various attachments. The first is the energy ordinance. You'll also find the green building ordinance. The supporting documentation to those is the energy cost effectiveness study prepared by TRC. And finally, in response to Policy and Services, we did a laundry to landscape valve cost estimate, just to get, give you a sense of how much it costs to put one of these diverter valves in, and we'll get into that in a few minutes in the presentation. Recent, recent leadership awards that the Development Services Department in cooperation with other departments have been able to receive that really speak to this work and the effort that we've been able to achieve is first and foremost, award for sustainability provided to us by Actera Business, it's the Actera Business Environmental Award. Phil Bobel had mentioned this in a city manager conference some weeks back. We're very proud to have received that award in cooperation with the various other departments in the city, and green building was a, was a part, was a part of that. We recently were awarded the ISO One Class Community through the building code enforcement grading system. As you know, we're a Class One organization now, which means that the residents and property owners in Palo Alto get to benefit from reduced insurance rate, as well as be ensured that their buildings will withstand impacts such as fire and hazardous events such as earthquakes, better and more resiliently than buildings that are classed in less than Class One. We were awarded the most electric vehicle ready community back in 2013, and finally, our green building leadership award we received in 2013 reflect the advancement that we've made in green building. This is the visual facilitation diagram that we produced at our green building retreat. It speaks to sort of the direction, it gives a nice narrative that we use to follow the discussion. We talked about water, emissions, energy, materials and waste, and indoor air quality, all of which were identified, prioritized, and pursued. This quickly is a timeline of our efforts. On the top, you'll notice the timeline from 2014 to, all the way through to 2050. In bold, 2016 and 2019 represent code cycles. I'm sorry, I take that back. The, the green buttons represent the code cycles. That's 2015, which just passed, 2017, which is the next code cycle, and then 2019, which is the code cycle after that. Those represent the code cycles that we need to be in advance of, so our ordinances have to include all the local amendments, we need to go through the adoption language in advance of those codes. And that's what drives all of this effort to make sure that our green building and energy codes are adopted well in advance of those, of those periods in time, those January 1st deadlines. So step one is before you tonight, that's the green building and the energy reach code. Step two is the zero net energy code, which will be coming before you in advance of 2017. Hopefully by June of 2016, we'll have that wrapped up, which means we have to start that work immediately after we finish this, this effort before you. And that, step two, is going to be focused on zero net residential energy. We're going to study where to draw that line and pursue zero net energy through the mandate of solar power on rooftops, as well as identifying what is cost effective, which we'll get into. And finally, step three, we're calling a rollout. This is in advance of the 2030 goals established by the state, which identifies when we want to try to be zero net energy for commercial buildings, much higher threshold to achieve. Technology still has a ways to go to catch up with that, but we are going to try to see how we might advance and beat that deadline here in Palo Alto. But again, it's a rolling effort, and we will start that after 2017, when we adopt the next step. Below, at the bottom, you'll find the three projects that this is paralleling, the comprehensive plan, the Sustainability Climate Action Plan, which Gil made mention of, as well as the electrification study or the fuel switching study that's currently underway. All three of those efforts are aligned with the work that we're doing, and we collaborate very regularly with those departments to make sure that we're on the same page. Training and outreach was a big focus in this effort, and it's a reason that we received the ISO Class One rating. We need to educate the construction, the architectural and the engineering community about these efforts. It is one thing to design a building, it is something else to actually build it. And we can't underestimate how difficult it is for a construction community that's been building buildings one way for decades, which is now being asked to build it a different way. This leads to cost overruns, delays, and other things. We're trying to get ahead of that by training and reaching out to the community of contractors, engineers, and architects to make sure that they're aware of how to actually build these things, which is not in your traditional way. This code, as you might, if you, as this code reads, it's really focused on the construction of the shell of the building, and it really stays clear of any mechanical requirements, such as HVAC systems, heat pumps, and other things. That's because that's what we're going to be seeing in this next code cycle, which requires that contractors really understand the science of building buildings. So there needs to be a press from us as leaders in this space, ahead of all other municipalities, to educate the construction community on what it is that we're expecting them to do above and beyond all of our surrounding cities. We take that mandate seriously, and we will talk a little bit about what that, what we're doing to achieve that. The first is our new green building webpage has been overhauled, thanks to the hard work of Melanie, which has a lot of informative pages and forms and documentation. We've also included in our green building handbook that we're providing as part of the construction guidelines, our community presentations and guest speakers that we're having on a quarterly basis. We're going to basically have speakers every month going forward to talk about where the bar is in Palo Alto and how to achieve some of these, some of these measures that we're implementing. We have a green building advisory group, the G-Bag that I mentioned, which we meet regularly. Our development center has commercials now. If you go down to the DC, you'll see a large monitor displaying commercials, educating and directing people to where they can get more information. And finally, we publish the Development Services newsletter. If you aren't a recipient of that, please let us know, we'll be happy to add you to the mailing list. Not only does it have information about what we're doing as a department, but also construction updates. So with that, I'm going to pass the baton over to Melanie, she'll quickly go through our energy reach code ordinance, and if you have any questions, feel free.
Thank you, Peter. Honorable counsel, thank you for hearing this ordinance today. So the two ordinances before you are broken out between the energy reach code ordinance and the green building ordinance. So the energy reach code ordinance improvements include three primary amendments above the baseline state energy code. So we're calling it the new reach code ordinance because it does reach beyond what's, what is minimum. And what's proposed for new construction is a 15% improvement over the baseline state requirements. So that's increased stringency over state requirements by 15% for all single family, all multifamily, and all commercial projects. And those findings have been supported by this cost effectiveness study that Peter mentioned, and that's also included in your packet, that explores the different angles in which that, those goals can be achieved. So since the, the code is a performance-based standard, it looks at several different option, options as to how those requirements can be achieved. The cost effectiveness study doesn't cover the breadth of all potential measures. It's, it really is more than one report could even cover, but it does outline certain measures that are specific to our climate zone and typical building practices that are included in Palo Alto. So that's what we based that, that regulation language on. In addition, renovation projects 1,000 square feet or greater, we're going to have two options for compliance. So option one is the performance standard, which increases, increases the stringency over the state requirements by 5% for single family, 10% for multifamily, and 5% for commercial. So similarly, there'll be an option two for prescriptive measures, which presents a, a list of cost-effective measures that independently are cost-effective on their own, as opposed to a performance package which looks at all those measures combined together on, on a single building. So with that, we'll go on to the next slide here, which outlines the additional measures. So also in the reach code ordinance, we have solar-ready infrastructure for new homes. So this is an amendment above and beyond the state energy code, again, included in the cost effectiveness study, in which we're proposing to designate 500 square feet of room on the roof designated for future installation of a solar-ready, of solar, of a solar panel system. So it wouldn't be an actual mandate of a, of a full system, it would be the solar-ready infrastructure to essentially eliminate the barriers for entry for a homeowner. The ordinance also proposes the installation of conduit from the electrical panel up to the roof line, again, to eliminate the barrier to entry for a future installation. And one item that has been a challenge that we've been working in collaboration with urban forestry on is working on exceptions for properties with protected trees. So we want to make sure that the new policies that we propose are in sync with our existing policies. So we've worked through a number of items with that, and we'll continue that conversation forward with our future priority slide that Peter, Peter will be going over. Now, in addition, during the Policy and Services meeting in March, on March 10th, Councilmember Burt and, and the Policy and Services Committee requested that we draft a carefully constructed infeasibility clause. Since this is a progressive ordinance, we want to recognize that there are situations where alternative measures, proposing a, an exemption to allow staff to permit alternative measures where strict compliance is not feasible or cost-effective. And we have included that, and that is in the ordinance before you. Also included in the, in the second reading of the ordinance will be a small amendment which basically clarifies language on subdivisions, and so that will be included in the second reading. One of the items that the Policy and Services Committee requested is, was a analysis of the greenhouse gas savings associated with the energy reach code ordinance, and that has been prepared in the cost effectiveness study and in this slide before you today. So the, what this slide aims to capture is just a digestible understanding of the greenhouse gas savings associated with this energy reach code. So, and I'll have Farhad explain that a little bit more, but basically, what you're looking at is the greenhouse gas savings avoided for the natural gas associated with buildings. Since our electricity stock is carbon neutral, we don't, we don't, there are no greenhouse gases associated with that, those emissions. So this is only associated with natural gas. So, and he'll get into that in just a moment, I'm going to pass this over.
Honorable counsel, I'll just briefly interject to describe in detail this chart. As Melanie mentioned, it describes the avoided emissions due to the set of measures that we studied in our analysis associated with the reach code. The gray bar on the left side, it represents the typical emissions associated with the building that minimally complies with the statewide standards, energy efficiency standards. The bar on the right represents the tons of CO2 emitted with the Palo Alto reach code, the measures that we have studied in our, in our analysis. And the little dots above those bars represent just the percentage savings. So going from, for example, from, for multifamily, eight tons of CO2 emitted per new multifamily construction down to about five is about, represents 32% savings in, in emissions, in greenhouse, greenhouse gas emissions. As Melanie mentioned, these are based only on natural gas, and that's why they vary from the 15% savings that the reach code prescribes. And the measures that we studied were, affected electricity consumption, natural gas consumption differently for each prototype, so 20%, 32%, 8%. That's why they're fluctuating from that 50% value. Non-residential buildings show 8% reduction, mostly because the residential measures that we researched were domestic hot water focused, and there's just generally less consumption of domestic hot water in non-residential buildings. So there's only 8% greenhouse gas savings there. That's pretty much it.
Great, thank you, Farhad. Great, so that concludes our summary of the energy reach code, so we'll now go on to the green building ordinance improvements. So the first item that the green building ordinance proposes is using residential CalGreen, what we call voluntary tiers. It basically mandates the state, the use of the stated developed Tier One and Tier Two system. So based on a project's scope of work, it would trigger either a Tier One or a Tier Two system. One of the items that the Policy and Services Committee requested is that we work through some of the clarifications that the Green Building Advisory Committee wanted to include, and we have done that, we've met with them twice since the Policy and Services Committee, and their comments are reflected in the ordinance before you tonight. In addition, the, the ordinance with the adoption of the Tier One, Tier Two system, the use of the third-party certification program, Build It Green, is retracted. We still will promote the use of third-party rating systems, just not necessarily as an enforcement tool. The second item in the green building ordinance improvement list is inclusion of laundry-to-landscape ready infrastructure. And essentially, the requirement includes the installation of a diverter valve on the back of washing machine fixtures in new construction projects. So So, I have a graphic on the next slide that we'll show you. Um, in addition, we have, uh, outlined increased water efficiency measures, uh, essentially lowering the square footage requirement trigger for, um, increased, uh, efficiency standards for irrigation on both residential and non-residential projects. So, the graphic before you outlines a conceptual diagram of a laundry-to-landscape-ready system. So, uh, laundry landscape is, is, is essentially a, a simple concept of taking the, uh, laundry water, um, that's been used and sending it out to an irrigation, out, out to the lawn for, um, for irrigation. So, in the proposed requirements, the, the item that is included in the proposed requirement is the installation of the diverter valve at the clothes washer drain line, which is outlined in the red, um, circle that you see in front of you. The actual laundry-to-landscape piping and irrigation installation will remain voluntary. The intention behind this portion of the ordinance amendment is to, again, eliminate the barrier to entry for those who want to go that step beyond, um, and install a gray water. So, we're not mandating, um, any use of gray water at this time, just for the infrastructure to be included, um, as part of a new construction project. Okay, and with that, um, I'll send it back over to Peter to talk about our future priorities.
Okay, and just to close things up, um, we wanted to just quickly go over, um, where we're going to go next after tonight. Uh, we are going to reconvene the Green Building Advisory Group to, talk about, uh, solar-electric mandate, uh, and think about ways that we could make that cost-effective. Uh, we're going to be thinking about zero-net energy, uh, design mandate as we look into residential buildings becoming zero-net energy. Uh, we're going to continue conversations with Electric Utility about electrification, and we are going to be revisiting our electric vehicle policy for remodeled and existing homes. Uh, from, from the water perspective, um, now that we received the response from, uh, the executive order, we are going to be taking a closer look at how our new construction can, new construction can respond to, uh, our new environment through cistern mandates, recirculation pumps, gray water systems that are a little bit more aggressive, and elimination of lawns. So, all things that we can think about and investigate, but, um, what's before you tonight is the following motions to adopt our Green Building and Energy Codes, and with that, uh, we would welcome any questions that you might have. Thank you for your time.
Councilmembers, questions, comments, motions? Vice Mayor Schmidt?
Uh, just a quick question. Certain parts of town are in flood districts, and by mandate with a certain, uh, refurbishing, remodel of the home, they have to raise it three feet. Does this affect that mandate at all?
Trying to, okay, so, could you repeat the mandate? The mandate to raise the homes?
They have to raise them three feet from ground level if they have a remodeling, rebuilding.
Any home that affects a thousand square feet or more is going to be subject to the Green Building Ordinance. So, if...
I guess, does it work the, the other way around? That you reduce the, uh, the square footage from 1,200 to 1,000? Would that affect remodels of, uh, 1,000 feet where it would not have before?
Um, the remodel, uh, criteria includes, um, it looks at the, um, the energy-using systems of the, of the building. So, 1,000 square feet, um, if you have a remodel, that's 1,200 and going to 1,000. If it's altering some of the energy-using systems, two of the four main energy-using systems of a typical home, then it would be triggered. But it wouldn't be, um, necessarily, the fact that it's being raised wouldn't be, wouldn't impact the, the energy performance of the building.
I guess the impact is on the home remodel.
Right.
Where you want to remodel your home, but you don't necessarily want to get involved in raising the whole structure. So, are you putting a bigger mandate on? Okay.
Can staff answer that, please?
Um, I'm trying to, I'm trying to conceptualize the question. Maybe if you could rephrase it.
Yeah.
Councilmember Burt?
Yeah, if I understand it correctly, um, basically, if you do a remodel, uh, above the 1,000 square feet, uh, that's what triggers, and you're in the flood plain, that's what triggers having to elevate it. This doesn't change the trigger point for that. It does mean that, like any other home that is remodeled above 1,000 square feet, uh, certain of these things would occur, but no different.
Yeah, I guess my question is, is the remodel driven at 1,000 square feet for the raising the three feet? Is that...
Well, either way, this, this doesn't change what drives, uh, elevating a home. This is just about the green energy. We, we still have whatever we have in the code about what triggers elevating a home in a flood plain.
Okay.
So, that answered your question?
Yeah.
Um, I also, before we go to any motions, I also should, uh, acknowledge that we have one public speaker, so, questions and comments, then we'll go to the public and then come back for motions. Um, Councilmember Burt?
Well, that was, uh, the main reason I, I, um, was, uh, hit my light, but I, I will say that the committee, uh, had five different, uh, small requests, uh, of staff to look at modifying, um, what was presented to the committee. And to their credit, they went through these, reconvened the, um, uh, Green Building Advisory Group, went through all of these in, uh, just over a month, uh, and that's pretty fast work. Uh, I'm not sure that we expected that you'd come to the full council with resolution on all those, and, um, and that was very good. And then, you'll see on page 698 of the packet are the two, uh, additional items that we've asked that be evaluated going forward, and we'll hear back next year on those, I assume.
That's correct.
So, lots of good, hard work on this.
Thank you.
Councilmember Scharf?
Oh, I was going to make the motion, so, go ahead and go to the public.
Well, no motions yet. Um, so, Councilmember Niss, uh, you're waiting?
I would have done it.
So, you're...
Councilmember Scharf just did.
So, you're waiting. So, Councilmember Wobak?
I just wanted to, uh, second what Councilmember Burt, uh, just said. Uh, thank you for great work in turning it around so fast. I really appreciate what staff's done here. Thank you.
Councilmember Felseth?
Um, thanks. I got, uh, three questions, hopefully short. Um, first of all, the, the tier-one, tier-two thing, which looks to me like it's in section A4.106.9, um, does that mean you can't have a lawn?
You can't what?
Have a lawn. Or, how's that work?
No...
It's a 25%, 10% thing?
Um, so, I think you're referring to the, the lawn, um, measure?
Yeah.
Let me just...
Page 707 of the packet.
Yes, I know which one you're referring to. So, the way that the tiers work is that, um, based on the scope of the project, certain, uh, tier-one or tier-two will be triggered based on the scope. So, tier-one is for, uh, remodels over 1,000 square feet, and tier-two is for new construction.
Mm-hmm.
So, within those tiers, um, you get to select a certain number of measures that makes sense for the project. So, you'll have, you know, um, in each category, specifically for water, there's 14 measures that you can choose from, um, and that turf item is one of them. So, you can choose that if it makes sense for the project. We do have mandates for the actual efficiency of the overall water budget. So, each home or new construction project or renovation will need to put together a water budget. So, you get, it's a performance requirement. So, based on the square footage, um, how much landscape there is, uh, the type, types of, um, plantings that are specified, including the type of irrigation that's specified, the, the designer will get a budget in which to use that water on. So, that's really the methodology that the state requires, uh, what requires and what we've adopted, um, above and beyond the, the minimum thresholds.
So, what does the state require versus what do we require?
So, the state requires, um, that we adopt the, what's called the Model Water Ordinance. And, um, it, it's all based on, um, turf. Turf uses, turf is the maximum amount of water that's used. So, the state requirement, um, is, I don't have it right in front of me, but it's approximately 45 to 55% of what's called ETO, which is essentially turf. Um, that's the technical term. And we have adopted, uh, 65 and 55% above those item, those, that baseline. So, that's, um, included in the ordinance before you as a mandate. The, there are the tiers, which are the optional choose-from-a-list of items.
Okay, so, if I understand what you said, at one level, it's optional. On the other hand, you don't have an infinite number of options. You have to pick something off the menu.
That's correct.
And so, if you decide you want a lawn, you have to cut somewhere else.
That's correct. That's correct. And with the, the way that our budget is, um, written, it's, lawns are becoming much less, um, uh, popular, just due to the fact that they need so much water.
I understand.
Yeah. And that's definitely one of the things that the G-bag has discussed, is how can we bring something for you that eliminates lawns or minimizes them to the maximum degree?
Okay. Okay, so my second question has to do with, uh, the solar-ready on the roof. So, you designate 500 square feet, and you put a conduit there and some bracing or something like that and so forth. Uh, but there's a, there was a line about an exception for protected trees, right? Um, I assume that implies there's non-protected trees, too. Uh, does this ordinance, is it conceivable this would force you to cut down some trees?
Well, that's a great question, and that's what we've been working, uh, closely with the Urban Forestry Division on. There is already existing legislation in the Solar Shade Act of 2009 that essentially says whatever was there first, Trump's, um, shade. So, if a tree was existing, um, and somebody installed a solar panel system, uh, the rights would be the tree owner.
Okay.
And vice versa. If the, uh, solar panel system was installed and then the tree was planted and grew up, the, um, the solar panel owner would have the rights.
Okay, so, if I understand that right, then, uh, it might prohibit you from planting a big tree or letting it grow real high if you already had solar there? But if the tree was already there, then you don't have to cut it down?
Um, I think it really just gets to, uh, it doesn't prohibit, it's more of just, you know, if, if we have to get involved with pruning tree, existing trees, we want to know about that ahead of time before we, um, mandate a solar panel system next to an existing tree.
It doesn't mandate you should cut down any trees. The, the code won't mandate any tree cutting.
Okay.
But it just provides an avenue for there to be a conversation about who gets the priority for non-protected trees.
Okay, but there's not a circumstance in which, you know, you'd have to cut down a tree or you force your neighbor to cut down a tree or something like that?
No, and that's, that's exactly what the Solar Shade Act addresses.
Okay.
So, the, the most protective of trees will prevail over a solar system in the, in the proposed mandate, that will, what we'll be studying.
Okay, and I have one more question, which is, uh, you folks have done a whale of a lot of work here. Did you look at all at, uh, embedded greenhouse gas emissions of construction materials used in these things at all? And, because I think I saw a reference somewhere into sort of concrete use or something like that. And, and if you did that, did you, did you come up with any numbers?
Um, there is, uh, a option in one of the tiers to do, um, a lifecycle cost analysis, which looks at that very subject. We're, the industry is right in the infancy of those types of analyses.
Right.
But we are, we have highlighted it as an option if a, if a team wanted to go and do that work.
Okay.
Um, we have outlined it as an innovative option for them.
Okay, thanks very much.
Mm-hmm. So, I have a couple of questions, one that you've sort of addressed as a result of Councilmember Felseth's question, um, about trees. So, if you aren't required to take down any trees, why is the language written "exceptions for properties with protected trees"? Because, as I recall, the Solar Shade Act, which by the way came about because of the, uh, the efforts of one of our city employees, uh, who went to battle to protect her trees, or their trees. Um, I don't recall that referring to just protected trees or redwoods. I think there's happened to be, but why does it say then "protected trees"?
That's an excellent question. So, um, the issue, the, the challenge around the, um, solar mandate or the solar-ready proposed language also looks at the local Palo Alto ordinance and the Solar Shade Act. So, those two items would have to work in tandem, um, and will have to work closely with the Urban Forestry Division to make sure that both of those legislatures are coordinated with this effort. So, it's both. So, protected would be protected under our Tree Protection Ordinance and protected under the Solar Shade Act.
I don't see that that's how this is written, because this says "for properties with protected trees" in sync with the Solar Shade Act. It should, it seems to me the language should be something more akin to, um, "exceptions for properties with protected trees" and, um, uh, protection of trees in, in sync with the Solar Shade Act. But protected trees seems like it shouldn't be there, because it seems like it limits the protections.
Um, well, we'll have to, um, talk with our urban, urban forestry partners and get back to you exactly on the, the, the details of that language. That's what came out of our meetings with them, um, and we can certainly look into it and make sure that we've, um, looked at it from all angles.
Well, but we're here to vote on this tonight, so, uh, that's, that's one question. Then I had a question about, um, uh, cement use. Um, and, um, I'm, on the one hand, I'm happy that, um, it can reduce because cement is the biggest polluter in manufacture of any construction material whatsoever. And so, when you're talking about products that may usually replace cement in concrete mixed designs, you're talking about fly ash, slag, um, you know, you mentioned a couple of others. So, my question is, and I'm sure you've looked at this, but I just want to make sure. So, when we build basements here, they have to be built like ships that go underground. So, are these, um, these formulas for concrete, are this, is this just for foundations or is this for basements and foundations? So, I'm not clear on the utilization of this exactly.
Sure. So, um, in terms of reduction in cement use, it's about the volume of cement that's being used. So, it wouldn't necessarily be specific to that, the, the application of the cement. So, it's, if there's X cubic tons of, um, cement used, it would be based on that amount. And the structural engineer would, civil and structural engineer would, of course, determine what would be structurally sound for those, um, those items.
Okay, I guess. Um, it's not very clear. Hello?
Sorry, page 11.
Oh, it's, um, packet page 711. Um, it's not very clear here, um, what the application is, um, because it doesn't seem to, uh, doesn't seem to address both issues. So, we have, uh, Councilmember Scharf, do you have a question? Or we have two members of the public? Yeah, okay.
No, I did have a question, actually.
Okay, go right ahead.
So, I actually wanted to follow up since you're asking us to vote tonight. Um, I, I think, um, Mayor Holman made two good points. So, when we came up with this, you know, like, reduction in cement use as an example, was that vetted by, you know, building industry people who said, "Okay, most people in Palo Alto want to build a basement where they're allowed to." Um, you know, what effect does that have? Um, you know, what effect does that have on their ability to do so? Are we, I assume we're not basically making it difficult to build a basement?
No, we're not. So, this, um, the reduction in cement use is actually one of the proposed elective measures. So, if it makes sense for the design team, they can choose that from a list of options based on the scope of the project. So, if it makes sense to go for this particular prerequisite, or, excuse me, this elective, then the design team can do so and move forward with the design using this guy as a guideline.
So, what stuff like fly ash and slag and silica fume and rice hull ash?
So, those are byproducts of, um, uh, different processes, industrial processes, that would typically just go to the landfill, and if it's reused, um, it can, these items can be... And if it's reused, it can, these items can be reused within concrete, cement, to minimize the other aggregate that gets added.
So, they replace the sand, is basically what you're suggesting?
The, yes, it goes in part of the mix design.
Okay.
And, and these are, oh, go ahead.
Councilmember Burt?
Sorry, these are all, if I recall correctly, these materials, the first three are industrial waste, and the fourth one is an agricultural waste. So, it's a pretty progressive utilization of waste material to replace the cement.
Back to Councilmember Scharf.
So, when we, when we talk about, you know, you have a menu of options. So, I guess the question becomes, you know, if you can't reduce your cement by twenty-five percent, now, do you know if you then used fly ash, or slag, or silica fume, stuff like that, do those have the same properties of, of regular cement for water tightness, and for a basement, and all of that? So, is it just a cost issue? Is it just more expensive to use fly ash, and that kind of stuff? Or what, what's, what's the issue?
So, over the last ten years or so, this has become much more popular in design and construction. The, some teams might not choose this option, because the cure time is typically a little bit longer, so it takes longer for it to, it to dry. So, some teams would go against using it for that particular reason, if they're on a timeline budget, on a timeline. But some structural engineers will tell you that this is standard practice, and they'll use it. Others say, you know, they prefer the conventional methods, it's, there's a range of options. And that's why we've elected to make it a elective, and not a mandate.
Okay, so, this is sort of a broad question. You know, the ordinance is really complicated, and there's no way, as I, as a city council member, can understand its unintended consequences, or, you know, I mean, obviously, I like the intended consequences, which is reduction of greenhouse gas. So, what I guess I wanted to ask you is, any sense at all that we're driving towards a particular style of home on this? For instance, that, you know, flat roofs are going to be much easier because of the solar requirements and that, than having more, you know, Spanish-style, or Mediterranean, or colonial, or craftsman, or, or something like that? That, you know, so that would be a concern of mine, if we're going to drive Palo Alto to look, you know, with a bunch of flat-roofed houses in a modern style. I mean, if that's what people want to choose, I think that's fine. But, so, that's really my concern, is are we doing that? Are we somehow limiting something that people typically do? You know, build a basement, for instance, or anything like that, that we're going to change the way the built environment in Palo Alto looks? Ignoring landscaping for a minute, but I mean, an actual, the style of house you build, and that kind of stuff.
So, based on our interactions with the Green Building Advisory Group, which is made up of a variety of different architects, both residential and commercial, we didn't get any of that feedback from them. It's really more, it's getting harder to build the home, and it's getting harder to find contractors that know how to actually construct the home in a way that meets our tightness test. So, it's really that.
Now, when you say a tightness test, what does that mean?
Imagine a, a house as a balloon, with holes in it versus no holes in it. And that's, we're trying to get the balloon to be as tight as possible, so it doesn't, it doesn't lose any energy in, when it's being heated and cooled.
Okay, got it. Okay, and then in terms of the landscaping, basically, we're driving towards less lawn. I mean, that's what it, it basically looks like. You're allowed some lawn, but we're driving towards less lawn. And that's where, are we allowing artificial turf, and that kind of stuff?
Sure.
Do we have any concerns that if we fill all the backyards with artificial turf, that earthworms and, you know, ecosystem, we're basically creating deserts?
We're not mandating the artificial lawns, we're mandating the reduced water use. We always advocate for drought-tolerant landscaping. That seems to be the growing trend. The artificial turf has its life expectancy, and other, like you mentioned, problems. We're seeing, like I said, more of the passive alternatives.
All right, thank you.
So, we do have two members of the public who would like to speak to this. Eric King, to be followed by Stephanie Munoz.
My name is Eric King, I'm twenty years resident in Palo Alto, also architect, practiced most of my career in, in this city. So, first of all, I agree with the direction that we're going to, toward the green building and the energy, but I do urge the council to consider, why do we need to mix these two amendments together? Can we consider separately? I can see the whole policy preparation, where's the professional input? The architects, the contractor, the engineer? Then, it is purely a laboratory test results. That, I, I, I'm not sure if you fully understand, I'm only talking about the energy part. The green building, I'm agree, no comment. The fifteen percent impact, what exactly is? If we only use the cost-effectivity study, there are some factors being left out. Do you know when we increased the insulation from two-by-four, because that, with two-by-four, two-by-six, the square footage for a twenty-five-hundred-square-foot house dropped about thirty square feet. In Palo Alto, thirty square feet, most residents know how much that will cost. Will that be a cost effect? And also, when we put the tankless water heater into it, the tankless water heater, the utility department will ask us to upgrade the gas line. Is that a cost effect being considered? It not just buying a tankless water heater? If half of the city, half of the block, using tankless, can utility department infrastructure support the instantaneous demand on the gas supply? That's something we really need to study, to put in this, into the study, and present it to you to make decision. So, I, I, it sounds like I'm against this fifteen percent, because the, last year's energy code upgrade, the state already upgraded twenty-three percent stringent than the previous years. Now, we're adding another fifteen percent, which really is a big impact to the industry. I did a quick study, because I know this very late. I did a quick study, asked my Title Twenty-four to do a quick study, how we can comply a new house to meet the fifteen percent. Three category we have to do. Tankless water heater, and insulated attic space. And also, the third area is miscellaneous. Throughout the project, we have to do low-y glass, we have to increase all the insulation we can. Then, we cannot do the house without the attic, because flat-roofed house, considered considerable, then we don't have that insulated attic credit into it. That means if you build a flat house, pretty much you're not going to meet twenty, fifty percent. The case study didn't study that. So, I urge you to spend more time to have professional input from the other side of the industry, which is actually, we hands-on this every day, and give the impact to you, give the results to you, that you consider this energy amendment. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
May I have a chance to respond to that comment? Thank you. Thank you, sir, for that comment. I would just, I, I understand your concerns, I would just like to add that the measures that we studied for the residential prototypes in this study are being mandated, are going to be in some form or shape, required by the twenty-seventeen California Energy Commission standards. There are going to be statewide laws, there are going to be the baseline, that's going to be effective January first, twenty-seventeen. There's been a breadth of research done for these measures, going from two-by-four to two-by-six. There's been a lot of feedback from the building industry, voicing similar concerns, but also saying, this is the direction that we need to go, and there are going to be some, some leaps that we have to make to get there, but they're going to have to be worth it. The upgraded pipe costs, thank you for bringing that up. That was brought up at a Green Building Advisory Group meeting, after the first draft of this issue, of those report was issued. We have since added that cost in for alteration scenarios, having to increase the size of that pipe for instantaneous water heater. And it's still cost-effective, we still found that to be cost-effective. I encourage you to look in the appendix for that analysis. Same with the attics, it's, it's been vetted with the industry, it's been discussed. There are different measures for different climate zones for that twenty-seventeen code that's impending, but it's, for this climate zone, it should, it should work.
Why can't we just wait until twenty-seventeen? Why do we have to act in the best?
Thank you, and our final speaker is Stephanie Munoz, please.
Good evening, councilmembers. I'd like to get one principle, at least, before trying to get through the maze of, of conflicting interests that surround this issue. The principle I'd like you to observe is, if there is something you want people to do, take care not to put a financial disincentive toward their doing it. A few years ago, I investigated solar, and I discovered that the city of Palo Alto had a rather high permit fee for the solar, which I thought, thought was astonishing, and then I, I dropped the project, and, and never followed through. So, perhaps that has changed, but just in general, I, I'd like to recommend that as your first principle. And the second is, to, to try and get the people on board, and early on, for what you want to do, and not have it come as a surprise, say, a year or two down the line, when they could have made a change early on for less money. And the, I don't know if you realize it, you're probably, you, you guys are in kind of a high bracket, but, and it doesn't apply to us anymore, because we lost the big house in Palo Alto, but we still have little rentals in other places. And I've discovered from talking to people around, starting with San Francisco, and Mountain View, and Santa Cruz, and other places, that there has been a tendency after Prop thirteen for towns to get money by, get revenue from permits. This was forbidden by an initiative called Proposition Two-eighteen. And the, the cities, you probably know this, may not charge more for the permit than the cost of implementing it, the cost of examining it. But that's a rule that's more honored in the breach than in the observance. And I, I wish, I think you know what you need, is an ombudsman, that people could go to when they, when they find that they're being whipsawed by, by arrangements that are sent down from on high, because it can be very, really quite difficult. For, just for, no, okay. And I'd be glad to speak to the, the people in, in charge later about that.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Returning to councilmembers. Comments, questions, now motions. Councilmember Scharf?
So, I'll make the motion in a second. I did have just one question. Did, um, did we look at how much this is going to add to the cost of a home?
In dollars?
Yeah, in dollars, not in euros, in dollars.
Well, it really, and now in pesos.
Yeah, not in pesos.
Okay, good. Yes, I'm glad we're on the same page. So, the cost, so there's, since it's a performance-based code, it really depends on what you do, and how you want to meet the impacts. But what we did determine was, based on a couple of different models, that every model that we studied, it was cost-effective at fifteen percent above baseline. So, amortized over thirty years. So, in every, in every scenario we studied.
So, you mean cost-effective, that you actually saved money on it? Is that what you mean?
Right.
Is that what you mean by cost-effective?
Correct, yeah.
So, what you do is, it costs a bunch upfront, but if you amortize that over thirty years, it'll save money.
Exactly.
Did you get a number for roughly what it adds to the cost of some base home? Like, say, a fifteen-hundred-square-foot home, a three, I don't care, I was just curious if you had a number.
Yeah, so, the prototypes that we ran for single-family residential, which is a mix of, it's about an average twenty-four-hundred-square-foot home, it would add about two thousand one hundred dollars.
About two thousand dollars. All right. All right, with that, I'll make them, first of all, thank you. I, I can see that you put huge amounts of effort into this, and I did want to say we really appreciate that. You guys seemed to really understand what was going on, and, you know, I felt really comfortable with, you know, your answers. So, I'll make the motion that we approve the recommendation, the way you drafted it, whatever, whatever it was. How's that for a?
Very precise.
Very precise, right?
Yeah.
The recommended motion on, there we go, whatever that says, all that. I don't feel like reading it.
Would you care to read the recommended motion into the record, please?
Oh, sure.
It'd be helpful.
I, I said I didn't feel like reading it, but for the mayor, I will absolutely read it. So, staff recommends it, so, I'll read it. An ordinance, one, an ordinance repealing and restating the Palo Alto Municipal Code, Chapter sixteen point one four, to adopt and amend the two thousand thirteen California Green Building Code, Title Twenty-four, Chapter eleven, Attachment A. And, two, an ordinance repealing PAMC, Chapters sixteen point one seven and sixteen point one eight, and restating Chapters sixteen point one seven to adopt and amend the two thousand thirteen California Energy Code, Title Twenty-four, Chapter six, Attachment B.
Okay, do we have a second?
Saying no second, I guess we go home.
Second.
And then Councilmember Burt, Councilmember Burt's second, so, Councilmember Scharf, do you care to speak to your motion?
Just thanks again for, you know, and to the work of the group, because you did turn this around, and, and thanks to Policy and Services, I actually saw they had some really good responses that they had you guys include into this.
Councilmember Burt, speak to your second.
Just briefly, that, if I have a voice, that when we look back at what California has done thirty-plus years ago with Title Twenty-four, I think it is, legislation, and all of those progressive maneuvers that, and initiatives that ended up driving better building practices, that have now been adopted nationally, and now are widely recognized to have been very cost-effective in the long term, this is in that same path. And, and the state continues to move forward. We looked at what things we could do sooner that would not have any significant negative impacts, and we felt that we could do these. And so, I think it's a good measure, and, and it's going to be sound practice for the long term. Excellent.
So, I don't see the other lights, and I have one, maybe two things. One is, I would like to add an amendment that these ordinances return in a one year, in, within one year, to be, to be brought forward, so that any issues that have, that are identified can be addressed by the council. And the reason I'm doing this is because of the various reasons that you, you brought up, and that I brought up. Councilmember Scharf?
So, it's fine.
Okay, Councilmember Burt?
Can I ask staff a question?
Sure.
What was the, we, we had the update to the ordinance coming, so this would add just a review of any, excuse me, unintended impacts, sorry. So, that, that could just be folded in with the update of the ordinance, is that?
If, if that would meet the intent, our, our hope would be that we could bring back the amendment. It would be a little bit longer than a year, if that would be okay. It'd be about a year and a half, but we could, we could bring back a summary in advance of that, if that would please the council. Our intent is to bring back a new revised ordinance in a year and a half, which would fall in line with this next code cycle.
So, if the amendment would be revised to eighteen months, I think that would be most efficient.
That's okay with me. Okay.
Okay, accepted.
And just to clarify, I mean, I'm assuming that as it relates to this review, it's both based on how we've gathered feedback of issues, and at that review period, for the people to have the opportunity to comment. We wouldn't necessarily have to go through detail, detail, detail review. It's much more on a sort of exception problematic, what have we, what have we heard about things that aren't working?
My, my intention with the amendment is, yes, I still have some concerns about trees, Councilmember Scharf?
So, it should say staff will return with updates to these ordinance with any concerns that have been raised within eighteen, it's, it should say what the, what the updates should be? Because we're not mandating you update the ordinance if there's no.
That's correct.
I just want, thank you.
And to address your concern, Mayor Holman, our anticipation would be to prepare an administrative guideline to address some of the potential inconsistencies in the trees, and we could bring that as well.
Okay, great. And the amendment should read with any concerns generated by the, by the ordinances. I see no other lights. Thank you, Councilmember Scharf, for accepting that, and Councilmember Burt? Say, vote on the board. And so, that passes unanimously. Thank you to staff, it's a lot of hard work, and also thanks to Policy and Services. Thank you. So, we now go to item number eleven.
Well, it's after eleven o'clock.
Is it? Well, this has already been continued once.
Well, but we have a policy on how we address commencing items after a certain hour, right?
So, let me ask councilmembers, we have one member of the public We have one member of the public who's here to speak to this item, and this has already been continued once. Are council members willing to stay? And, and you know what? In the Basca item, there is a May meeting coming up. Do we have, we could put this on the next agenda, though, the Basca appointment. So we could put the Basca, well, so is there any objection, any strong objection to taking up item number 11 this evening? It's already been continued once, and I think it is a probably quick item. Do we have eight others who are willing to, to take this item up?
I think we should have a time limit on it.
Okay, well, we have a time limit of 30. Can we put a time limit of 15 minutes on it? Is that agreeable to council members?
Just make a motion to refer it out to Policy and Services. I think that trumps other motions, if I recall our, our procedures. And that way, we can continue moving this forward. That's going to be the outcome of this event anyway, at the end of the day.
The articles are to be written a month ago.
Except you're making a motion before we hear from the member of the public. So we have a member of the public who wishes to speak, and then you can make a motion. So we could make, we can dispatch this pretty quickly, but.
Okay.
Okay? So we have one speaker from the public, Doria Suma.
I'll be brief. Good evening, Mayor and City Council, Doria Suma, College Terrace. I am on the College Terrace Residents Association Board of Directors, but I'm speaking tonight as an individual. And the reason is, in March, when this first came to council, the CTRI submitted a letter of support for the colleagues' memo before you tonight. But since then, we've had an election, we have five new members, so we're, our first meeting will be Wednesday. So we haven't had a chance to revisit this with a new board. I believe the goal of increasing neighborhood participation and interaction between city government and neighborhoods is a laudable goal, and that the specific recommendations in the memo represent a great step forward towards reaching these goals. I'd like to offer my personal support for the ideas expressed in the colleagues' memo. I would be particularly interested in the opportunity for neighborhood associations to once again hold meetings in public facilities without the financial burdens of having to rent the space and pay for insurance. There's not a one-size-fits-all model for neighborhood associations. I also believe that the memorandum provides flexibility for each neighborhood to choose the structure that best fits their needs. I urge the council to support the item, to send it to Policy and Services for further consideration. Thanks.
Thank you. Now, council members? Councilmember Sharf, do you want to return?
I'll move that we refer this to Policy and Services.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Sharf, second by Councilmember Welbach. Would you care to speak to your motion?
No, I would not.
Councilmember Welbach?
No need.
I see no other, I just want to make one, one or two, maybe, quick clarifications. The ombudsman.
So Councilmember Holman, under the, under our rules on the motion, I, I don't mean to be so strict about it, but the only thing we're allowed to actually discuss is the propriety of referring it, not the substance of the, not the substance of the motion.
Can we not recommend things for the committee to consider when it is referred? I thought we could.
I don't believe so. Our motion says, we can only, it says on this, it says, only as to propriety of referring, not substance of referral.
City Attorney.
I'm just looking at the little cheat sheet they provide us all.
I know in the past that there have been, when there have been referrals.
Go ahead, I'm just telling you what it says.
You're so gleeful about it, too.
No, no, I said, go ahead, talk about it, I just, you know.
I know in the past, when we've sent things to Policy and Services or to finance, we've talked about what we want them to think about or consider when they do take it up. So I know we've done that in the past. Looking at the city attorney here. You know, we're taking more time with this, we're taking more time with this, and we're going to take me to make my comments, so.
Well, go make your comments.
Okay. So just a little bit of clarification about the ombudsman. The ombudsman is not someone, from my perspective and my intention, to be associated with a neighborhood association or any other organization representing neighborhood associations. This is a resource to individual residents or perhaps business owners. So it's an individual resource. And the other is that the communications person, that communications officer is just the person that the city, city would communicate with in terms of pushing information out that would be of interest to a neighborhood organization. So that's hopefully a couple of clarifications to those items. So, okay. Seeing no other light, shall we vote on the board?
There we go.
Almost. Councilmember Philseth. So referral of the colleagues' memo regarding city engagement with, strengthening city engagement with neighborhoods passes unanimously with a referral to Policy and Services. And then just quickly, which this is also quick, the discussion and appointment of a council member to the Board of Directors of the Bay Area Water and Conservation Agency and the Bay Area Regional Water System Financing Authority. I'm asking for any volunteers for that assignment. Councilmembers, Vice Mayor Schmidt?
It's a four-year assignment, by the way.
Four, not three.
Three or four, I can't remember.
Vice Mayor Schmidt, are you offering?
Yes, I would be willing to do it. I've been on the Santa Clara Valley Water District Boards and Commission for five years and happy to follow up, if anyone else wants to be delighted.
Are there any other offers? And also, I would really like to have an alternate.
Question.
Sorry?
All right. Councilmember Niss said this is a four-year assignment. So how does that work with those of us who are termed out in a year and a half?
So I would think that, I don't know this absolutely, but I would think that if a council member's termed out while serving a, serving a term on Basca, that you could also supplement with somebody else. This doesn't mean the same person has to serve, does it?
Councilmembers, I believe that this is an unusual type of appointment that does not expire on leaving office in Palo Alto.
Meaning that someone else could step in?
Meaning that the person could not step in. Could continue to serve.
Oh, you continue to serve even after leaving office?
Yes, although I believe that the council does have the authority to, to make an alternative appointment, is that your understanding?
Okay.
It's why Councilmember Klein is still serving, ex-councilmember.
Okay. So I have other lights. Councilmember Burt, did you get your question answered?
Yeah.
Okay. Councilmember Welbach, you have your light on?
I was just going to point out, as you'll see on page 791 of the packet, this person does not even need to be a member of our city council.
Okay, all right, very good. Councilmember Philseth?
I was going to say the same thing Cory said.
Do we have any offers for? Thank you, thank you, Councilmember Sharf. So we have Councilmember Schmidt, excuse me, Vice Mayor Schmidt, who has offered to be our representative, and Councilmember Sharf to be our alternate. So seeing no other loads, light, no other loots, vote on the board, please. That passes unanimously, and thank you both very much. Do we have any council member comments? Questions or announcements? Councilmember Welbach, sorry.
I'll make this brief. Last week, I went to the, as liaison to Palo Alto Housing Corporation, I attended the Palo Alto Housing Corporation's annual meeting. It was a good meeting, a couple of things out of that. One, there is a new organization starting in the, in the region called Silicon Valley At Home, focused on advocacy and education around affordable housing in particular. Also, a couple of comments from members of the, the Board of the Palo Alto Housing Corporation. One pointed out that, in their opinion, this is in relation to the planned community coming back to council for discussion. At least one member of the Palo Alto Housing Corporation Board pointed out that, in their opinion, affordable housing is a public benefit. They also discussed density rules and the complexity of, you know, the need basically to have a certain level of density in order to find and, you know, successfully have financing for affordable housing. If something like that, or density allowances, aren't allowed in the future for affordable housing, they suggested at least exploring ideas of something like an affordable housing overlay to allow for higher density for affordable housing, if it's not done through something like the planned community process. Also, I know we are still working on, you know, our own aspects of Buena Vista, but there was some discussion of possible temporary or relocation sites on properties owned by the Palo Alto Housing Corporation. Lastly, just anecdotally, they're also working on a project in Mountain View where the city of Mountain View actually came back to them and asked them to add higher density to an affordable housing project, which was an interesting juxtaposition.
Seeing no other lights, thank you all very much, colleagues.
With their city, strengthening city.